Madam Chair, I'd like to move that we go into executive session to protect the bargaining I'd like to move that we go into executive session to protect the bargaining position position of the board and move into executive session to discuss strategies with respect of the board and move into executive session to discuss strategies with respect to collective to collective bargaining and to return to open session at approximately 7:00 P. M. bargaining and to return to open session at approximately 7:00 P. M.
All those in favor? All those in favor?
You gotta do roll call. You gotta do roll call.
Second. Second. Roll call? Roll call?
Yes. Yes.
Ms. Robinson? Ms. Robinson?
Yes. Yes.
Dr. Doxer, yes. Dr. Doxer, yes. Ms. Webb, yes. Ms. Webb, yes. Okay, so we will. Okay, so we will. [inaudible] [inaudible] We are gonna take, if there's any public comment for items that are not on the agenda tonight, we take those now, always at the beginning of the meeting. Is there any comment? Okay. So, we will, I'm gonna pull the capital plan up in front of the reports tonight and in front of our consent agenda, and, because we have Joe Huggins here, I don't know if the town manager's still here, because they're here specifically for that, and then we will go back and do our consent agenda and reports, and then go into our new business, which is the late start and superintendent's goals. And we will, just so that people understand, there's a sign-in sheet in the back. If people do wanna speak during the agenda item, I know there's been some discussion on the late start, that will be part of that agenda item. We'll hear the presentation from Christine Kelly and the late start team, and then the school committee will begin some dialogue and discussion about it, and we will, at that point, allow, and I'll call the public that would like to speak. The school committee is not voting on that topic this evening. So, without further, I'd like to get the, we'll do the capo. Are you guys ready?
We're ready.
All right. Do I have enough seats? Thank you. So, to kick it off, included in the school committee packet that went out is an updated FY19 capital plan as it relates to the schools. The only change to this is that we have reflected the $200,000 that was requested by the finance committee at the financial forum on October 10th and subsequently approved by town meeting on November 15th, and the $200,000 relates to us going out to secure design services specifically related to TURF II. We are asking the school committee to approve the FY19 capital plan as it relates to the schools as amended and approved by town meeting. We also wanted to let the committee know that the town manager, while he is here tonight to help answer any questions that may come up regarding the capital plan, will be presenting the capital plan the current year as well as the 10-year plan next week on December 11th to the select board. Mr. Robinson and I believe Mrs. Webb will be attending that meeting to represent the school committee, as well as myself, Dr. Dougherty, Joe, and Kevin will also be attending to assist in any questions that come up. In addition to that, as part of next week's board, select board meeting, they will also be discussing the insurance plans. They will have a presentation being done at that time as well, so we wanted to let the committee be aware of that. During the January school budget meetings that we will be having with the school committee, we will be providing the committee with updates and developments as they relate specifically to the capital plan for the current year, as well as the items that just got approved as part of town meeting. We don't anticipate having a lot of updates within the next couple of weeks, but as the updates become available, we will be presenting the information to the committee and working closely with the town manager, updating the select board as well. We have asked Joe Huggins to be here this evening to provide an overall update on the FY19 capital plan, the items that had been previously approved, as well as a quick update on the next steps on the additional items that have been approved. So, I'm not sure if we want to hear the updates first and vote to approve it, or take the vote and then hear the updates.
People hear the vote, the...
To hear the updates first.
So, this year in the capital plan, I'll just go through what we've completed so far at the different locations. So, we had money in the capital plan, $40,000 here at the Redding Memorial High School for carpeting, and we've got that project just about complete. We have some remaining carpeting to do, which we're gonna do in the next two weeks in this building. The other school that we had money for carpeting was the Parker Middle School. That was $15,000, and that project has been completely, completely done. Also, within the capital plan, we have a project to replace a hot water boiler at the Coolidge Middle School, $30,000 job, and we are, the unit is on order, and we're hoping to get that done also over the Christmas vacation when school is out of session. The next two projects, one would be the Wood End Skylight project that we completed about a month and a half ago.
Excellent.
That project was original budget estimate of $480,000. It came in at a competitive bid at $219,000 with no change orders, and the project is done. It came out really nice.
Wow.
We were able to get the product that we specced, and so we're all pretty happy about that.
That's excellent. I really, you guys, kudos, because that was very challenging. Everything was late, and we were up against it, so that's just outstanding.
Yeah, it ended up coming out, it was a little dicey in the end, but we finished it before the snow.
Yeah.
Which is good. The next one is another, the allocation we had for the replacement of one of the boilers here at the high school, $575,000 project, went out for competitive bid also. That came in at $493,000, just under that, $493. We have money left over in the capital plan that we're gonna use as contingency money, as well as to do some electrical and controls work. Originally, we were gonna pull one of the boilers to be replaced offline and do the work over the winter. We did, we've signed the contract. The design is obviously done. We've taken ownership of the boilers. They're being stored right now. We're gonna do the work in May with a completion date of no later than August 1st. The reason for that is we did not wanna take a chance with having only one boiler in the bill, so that was the reason we did that. So, that project is also well underway. The items that were added to the capital plan, one of them is the $227,500 for enrollment slash master plan study. We are in the process, we actually put out a request for qualifications through the town procurement office, and had a good response, received four, four companies that have been on it. There is a evaluation team that's been set up. It's made up of myself, Gail Dowd, Kevin Cabuzzi, as well as the chief procurement officer, Allison Jenkins, and we're in the process of evaluating those right now. We're anticipating having an award done and negotiating with the contractor for the fee structure within the next two to three weeks, sometime right after the New Year, so that we can get that enrollment study slash master plan started.
Okay.
Great.
The next one is the TURF II project. We have, that's a little bit different. It's not Chapter 149. It falls under a different mass general law. It's Chapter 3039, which has a different structuring, the way you can choose a design team. So, we've partnered up with the engineering department at the DPW, and we've got it narrowed down to a company that specializes in turf field installations and turf field design. We're planning on walking next week with them, the DPW folks, and then hopefully shortly thereafter, we will be able to negotiate with that, and we'll bring everybody, they'll bring the whole team, and we're gonna be involved, and obviously it's gonna involve schools, recreation, facilities, and DPW, because there's gonna be input we need from all those groups. So, we're working on that simultaneously. The last one is the $500,000 that's in there for the, for the security, and in order for us to even take the first step forward, the capital plan was amended to include OPM slash design services. We are required to hire an OPM first. So, the procurement office is working on getting a package together to go out to hire a owner's project manager. The owner's project manager's role is to assist the town in choosing a design firm. They need to be in place before we spend dollar one on the design. That's the law. So, we're also working on that project right now. That's it.
Mr. Robinson.
Thanks, Joe. I just have a few questions. On the, she's just going down, on the HVAC energy management, where are we with this? Do we get any updates or is the whole NARESCO thing, so that was, what, seven years ago now or something?
Yeah. Right now, we're in a 15-year agreement with NARESCO through, with something called measurement verification, and basically what they do is they come out to verify, it was 2009, actually, that we did that project. We start off with a baseline before we did any of the energy conservation measures, and then we implemented them. And the trend, and we've been saving money off the baseline since the project has started. It's actually, we've exceeded the savings as far as consumption goes, costs go up.
Right.
Exceeded the savings. The reason we pay for measurement verification is to verify that we are meeting the agreement and to also make sure that if it went the other way and the overall savings wasn't there, and it was something that was, let's say, their fault, they refund us.
Right.
However, if the town is not maintaining their equipment, they ask us for proof every year to send us all of our reports and all of our PM records and everything. If we don't do our end, they won't guarantee it. So, it's kinda like a two-part thing. They're making sure that what they put in works, and we're making sure that we're, you know, we're maintaining the equipment so that we meet the savings, if you will.
So, we didn't, I'm trying to remember, we didn't do all of the lighting at the time?
No.
Because it was expensive? Does some of this extra, I don't call it extra, but this, where we came in under budget with the boiler, can we redeploy some of that money, some of the lighting we didn't do?
Well, so, at the time, we did a lot of light sensors in a lot of spaces in all the buildings, townwide, schoolwide. We did light sensors, and we did high-efficiency T8s. We looked into LED lighting at the time. It was way too expensive to do it.
Not now, though, it isn't.
Correct. So, since that time, just so you're aware, we've done, we took advantage of an RMLD rebate, and we did the common areas and the two big meeting rooms at Town Hall with LEDs. Joshua Eaton, we did the same thing. We're in the process right now of doing work, we did some work at Birch Metal, correct? LED light fixtures over there. We're also in the process of doing a lighting upgrade at the DPW garage, and the next one we're gonna hit is the fieldhouse with all LED fixtures. I'm hoping that to be able to get to that within our operating budget. There's some huge savings going on right now with... Standard Electric, I believe it is. ...that's offering, you can buy these things for a fraction of a cost, as long as you can put them in within a determinable amount of time. So, to answer your question, if we were gonna do another performance contracting initiative, it would be an LED project. That's where we would, because that's the biggest savings. That's the way to go.
Mr. Robinson.
What's, and I don't know, this maybe goes to John, on the elementary planning study, what's the shelf life or something like, because, I mean, we might not just start using it right away. How long does that, something like that, last us? Because I know it's been, what, 10 years now?
You're talking about the enrollment piece?
Yeah, the enrollment, I'm sorry.
Yeah, the enrollment piece, I mean, we haven't had one since 2001.
Right.
So, I think it's gonna, it'll have a decent shelf life, because we'll be able to use that data, because enrollment studies project out a good 10-plus years. And they're gonna look at what is current, the current developments that are going on in the town and any potential future developments that are in the books right now. So, it'll give us good information.
And then this is my last.
Yeah, Ms. Robinson.
You mentioned, Joe, security. I didn't see that in the hearing.
The security is actually under the, it's under the core, but it's under the town side. It does not fall directly under the schools, so it's not something that the school committee needs to vote on, but we will be keeping both the town side and the school side as updated as we can, given the nature of the project. So, we just, since it's come up in multiple meetings, we wanted to give an overall update, but that is under the capital.
On the core.
On the town side.
Okay.
Thank you.
Core.
Town core.
Thank you.
Dr. Doxer.
I had a question. You ran through who's on the team for the elementary schools. I didn't keep up with who you said was on the team.
Oh, it's just, it's just design.
No, this is just to pick a, we have, we're gonna be hiring an on-call architectural services firm or a house doctor.
Should've brought him.
And in order to do that, we need to evaluate the proposals. Now, once that's done, it's gonna, then there'll be another group of people that's involved. There'll be things that the facilities department needs to include, you know, because they're gonna ask for a lot of information. It'll be information transfer going from our department, from me and Kevin, but it'll be school department. So, I don't know what John and Gail have decided who that's gonna be, but we'll assist, but it'll be taken care of like that.
That's what I hadn't heard, so thank you.
This is just for the 3039.
We're not at that point, yeah.
Yeah, we just need to get, we just need to retain services first.
Now, is the PBC likely to be involved at that step, or no, not yet? No, it's the outcome of that, after the outcome of that.
Once we choose, right, once there's an actual project in place, then that's when they engage.
I have a request, just from hearing other folks too. When we use our alphabet soup, it might be good to speak out what it stands for.
Permanent Building Committee, I was asking, but, so the Permanent Building Committee will be engaged in the process after the planning and program and enrollment, that whole evaluation, and to Mr. Robinson's point, asking about shelf life, depending upon how long that takes, that could be a year, it could be two years, but whenever that is completed and that group decides there's a project, then the Permanent Building Committee would become engaged in the project, and the school committee is not solely responsible for building buildings again. Thank goodness.
That's correct.
Oh, Mr. Robinson.
So, I wanted to return to a couple numbers I thought I heard, Joe and Gail, but correct me if I don't have this right. So... So we, as a committee, had approved, was it 480,000 for the skylight at Wood End? Is that right?
Correct.
And that came in at, you said, 219?
219.
So that's 261,000 if I type my numbers in my calculator correctly. So what happens to that 261,000 we approved and didn't use?
That money, we are not able to reallocate. We would work with, if there was another capital need or other need, we would work with the town manager. It was approved through town meetings specifically for that purpose. So similar to some of the other changes, it would go through that process, either returning to free cash or being reallocated through, working with the town manager through the town meeting process.
Okay, so we do have a new need tonight. It is a capital need, and it's less than 261,000. It's Turf Two for 200,000, right?
Turf Two, the design services were approved as a capital item through the last town meeting.
Right. So what's the difference between the 200,000 that we have, that we're being asked to vote? That's the only change in the capital plan that we haven't already voted on tonight, right?
And the Wood End skylights were actually part of the FY18 capital plan, not the FY19. So they're two fiscal, fiscally separate years.
So that money doesn't, can't be accessed in this?
No.
Okay, so I just wanted to make sure we weren't voting twice, like, if we already had money for capital expense, I didn't want to vote another 200,000 if there was already 200-plus thousand available.
The Wood End skylights were approved as part of last year's capital plan. It's just that the planning, the timing, the contracting, and the actual work being completed. And until we were sure there were no contingencies or any other items that came up, we didn't know the definitive access that we have. And again, that was FY18 funded.
So the Turf Two work we're talking about is going to be completed in the FY19 year?
The Turf Two, this is design.
I just said work. That's all I said, was work.
Yes.
Design work.
That's the goal.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Robinson.
Just another question on the design. So I believe part, most of that is because we're looking at maybe extending the field or John or, I don't know if Tom's here, something like that, extending the, making it so you can play different events there that we can't now. That's, because you really don't need a design study to repair it, right?
So part of what we will be doing is looking at multiple scenarios based upon the feedback that we've heard at the financial forum, as well as the town meeting, is looking at Turf Two, currently looking at extending it width and length.
Right.
Also looking at the fencing, as well as the Turf Two lights. So we're basically going to look at various scenarios to determine the various pricing differentials between them, to make sure that we're making the right decision overall.
So that's the lion's share of the design. If we had just decided just to repair it, we wouldn't be spending 200.
Yeah, but the...
Mr. Higginson.
The issue with that is that you would really not want to, it's not just as simple as rolling up the turf and then having some new turf rolled out. It really is looking at what's underneath it and looking at the play surface itself and then looking at the substrate, I guess I'll call it, what's underneath and the matting material. That's all going to be upgraded. And in order for us to competitively bid it, we need to be really precise on what we put out on the street. And so you either pay for it now, lack of a better word, or you pay later. And I've seen that happen before. People don't do the right thing, and that's, it's kind of, it's like a belts and suspenders approach. Really, to put it out to bid in this market, you really got to be very precise on what you're putting out and what your expectations are, so.
I mean, I know, I know it's not your fault, and John's heard me say this a million, it drives me crazy that we aren't even out to bid yet, but whoever's picking up the bid package knows what we're authorizing to pay for it.
What I'll tell you, let me just say one thing about that. It's the same thing with the Wood End skylights. People knew what that was and we came in under bid.
Right, yeah. It's still competitive.
And the same thing with the boilers. It doesn't always mean that you're going to spend extra, but you're right. I mean, we don't know what the bidding market's going to be like when we put it out to bid. It could be that there's not a lot of people, there's not a lot bidding on the work and it could drive the price up. You don't know. But that's also another reason to have a good set of design specs put together for it.
Thanks, Joe.
Mr. Fox.
Yeah, I was going to say, they got a huge savings with the competitive bidding process before, and hopefully that continues. Just to put this in context, the design amount of the 200,000, Joe, the last time when we built Turf Two originally, several years ago, I know, I mean, just order of magnitude of what these fields cost, my sense is that this is less, or around, maybe it's around 5% to 10% of the cost of the full project. Is that a fair rule of thumb or my way of...
Usually, the design fee without the construction administration runs 10% of the project.
So that's my guess. So this is smart money, in the sense that you're trying to wisely spend the next 90% of your investment in this facility. So I see it as going slow to go big or go better. And to get the most out of those fields, if we can use them for more purposes, I think that only adds flexibility, because we're cramped as a town in terms of playing fields and time, I know. So if we can get more out of that site, I think that benefits everyone, so I'm in favor of this. Thanks.
I'd just like to add, so along those lines, though, then we have to make sure that if we're using the fields more, we have to pay, we have to maintain them. And it costs more to maintain a field that's used more. So there's both, you know, it does both things. So, you know, that piece of it has to be covered, and I don't know, I'm...
We will be covering sort of the ongoing, we won't know the ongoing maintenance of these fields, but as Joe comes in in January to present the school facilities, as well as what has been presented on the town side, we'll be able to talk to some of the expense increases associated with the field maintenance.
Great. So I think we need to, let's put the motion on the floor. Move to approve the revised and amended FY 2019 capital plan as presented. Seconded by Mr. Robinson. Any further discussion? Nope. All those in favor? And for zero, the motion carries. Mr. Higginson, Mr. Lalashara, Mr. Cabuzzi, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. We're going to go back to our consent agenda. And I think I need to ask if anybody has any items that they wanted removed from the consent agenda? I don't see any. I would just like to, I just want to highlight, there was our appreciation of the support of our community for our schools. There was a considerable amount of donations here tonight. They actually total a little over $21,000. And there's $5,030 for the arts. There's $6,500 in there for academic programs, $1,770 for field trips, and about $7,890 for coaching. So we really appreciate all of the organizations. Many of these are friends of soccer, of theater, of science, of football, of, that was chamber. And also, community organizations that really support our schools and support really our ability to provide our students with strong academic programming, as well as co and extracurricular. So we appreciate that. Can you put the motion on the table? Move to approve the consent agenda.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Bobbin. All those in favor? And that's four zero. Excellent. Okay, we're going to do reports. So usually, we'll start with our student. Do you have anything for us this evening?
Yeah, I do.
Great.
So it's been really busy these last couple of weeks. A lot of sports are starting. So Drama Club performed six outstanding shows of Mamma Mia. The audience was out of their chairs singing in the finale, so it was a ton of fun. Again, the RMHS girls swim and dive team are state champions, so that was really exciting. And then, just last, a couple of weeks ago, RMHS showed their school spirit at the Thanksgiving pep rally, an exciting game. The football team then went on to bring the Thanksgiving trophy back to Reading, so that was awesome. And then, these last couple of weeks, we had sports tryouts finishing, and games are beginning this weekend. And then, going for the arts, we have the jazz band, stage band, and chorus. They're going to have their free winter concerts next week, and those are going to be a ton of fun. And then, auditions occurred for the two winter shows, Chronicles of Jane, Book Seven, and Selfie. So the cast list came out, and rehearsals are going to begin for those two.
Thank you. And actually, we don't have our Director of Student Services, so Dr. Darty and our Assistant Superintendent, Gail, you're all done, right?
I gave my update.
Okay, so Chris has additional reports.
I don't have any additional. I'm going to wait until my presentation.
Okay, great. Dr. Darty?
I have a couple of things. First, and this was sent out today to Birch Meadow families, and we'll be sending out some additional correspondence to the rest of the community coming up, that unfortunately, we did have another school graffiti incident. This time, it was in the boys' bathroom, across from the cafeteria at the Birch Meadow Elementary School. It was racist graffiti, included multiple profanities. First, it was found around 3:00 by our extended day staff. We went through the protocol that we have put in place and unfortunately have been using several times in the last several weeks. Police were notified, Facilities was notified, Principal Hendricks notified me. Photographs were taken. It's in the middle of an investigation. Students, police, and administration are investigating it. Mrs. Hendricks wrote an excellent letter today that was sent out to the community. I just want to, I just want to read one paragraph that I think is really telling. "In light of the events at the middle and high school where racist and hate speech have been written on walls, it is important that we take these incidents seriously. Elementary school-age children say words or phrases that they overhear and may not understand. They do not intend to cause harm or injure others with this language. However, if it is not addressed, they will never understand the harm and damage racist language can cause. At Birch Meadow, we are absolutely committed to living our core values, and these values do not align with our racist or hate speech." So there are things that all of our schools are putting in place, obviously, and have already had in place, and Birch Meadow is no exception. I know that Principal Hendricks takes this very seriously and has already discussed things with staff. I know that they actually had a conversation prior to this with her school council Monday, ironically, about the different incidents that have been happening in our community. So wanted to report that out this evening. Obviously, this is not acceptable in our community, and we're going to do everything we can to educate our students on what is appropriate behavior. So that was my main point. Moving on to some things that are a little bit more positive. We have two students at Reading Memorial High School, this was in the newsletter that sent out this week, who have been chosen for what is called the All Eastern Honors Choir. This is a major achievement. We have several students that do very well in band and chorus recognition regionally every single year. But these two students, Antonio Ruiz Noakes and Isabel Molitieri, have been selected to participate in the 2019 NAFME All Eastern Honors Women's Choir and Miss Choir. And what this means is that they are competing against top musicians from Connecticut, Washington DC, Delaware, Massachusetts, Maine, New Hampshire, New Jersey, New York, Rhode Island, Pennsylvania, Vermont. And they are now going to be participating April 4th through 7th in performing and rehearsing in Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, as a result of being selected. So this is obviously an amazing achievement. I want to congratulate these two students, and also Kristen Killian, who has worked with these students for these last four years, to give them the, you know, to get the skills out of them that they're truly showing. So I wanted to mention that. I also wanted to mention that I had the opportunity, I know others did as well, attending the Festival of the Trees this weekend. This is the Reading Education Foundation each year, and it, as always, it did not disappoint. And there's something there for everyone. Not only do we have the beautiful and creative trees that many of our organizations and our schools put together each year, but also we have very, very talented festival performances, ranging from school performances, like our chorus, our high school chorus and middle school chorus, jazz band, but also community performers as well, our Colonial Chorus, the Community Concert Band, Reading Community Concert Band also played. So it really is just an amazing event each year. It's definitely become part of our community. I don't know how many years it's now been, but it's been several years. And I just want to, yeah, it's...
16.
16 years. So I want to thank the Reading Education Foundation for putting this on. I also want to thank the Reading Motory Club, who sold the refreshments and then donated the proceeds back to REF throughout the entire weekend. And I know that they, there was a lot of people there, so I'm sure they raised a lot of money. And our teachers will be reaping the benefits from that through the grants, and our kids certainly will benefit as well. So those are my two.
Great. Dr. Darty, you also recognized some students at town meeting, the MAS S Award, so that was...
I did.
Excellent recognition for two of our students.
Three.
Three students, that's right.
Three students.
It's usually two, but it was three.
It was three this year.
So that was excellent for their strong academic achievement, and it's quite an honor for them and their families to be there at town meeting. Okay, do I have reports from committee members? Mr. Robinson.
So I attended two recreation committee meetings, and the reason for the two meetings was that the Reading Little League softball had put a donation to redo Sturgis Park, and we met with them and agreed, went along with the plans. I think it's probably a lot of the work's already been done. But the wonderful thing about that was they did that all on their own, out of their, they used their own money. They didn't go, it was all in-kind work, and it's being designed to look like Morton's Field with the dugouts and new backstops of the Little League softball. I guess it's been a very successful program, so. The other thing I wanted to report on is I went, attended the football luncheon the day before Thanksgiving, and, you know, I'm just so proud of all of our boys get up and give speeches, and they just do a great job, and, you know, what our coaching staff does with them. I mean, they're just, you know, they're just impressive and do a great job, and, you know, look great. It was a pretty good event.
Thank you. We appreciate you representing the committee and attending the lunch. Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Doxer. Before Dr. Doxer goes, I just want to acknowledge that on behalf of the committee, Dr. Doxer did a tremendous amount of the work to organize the school committee's snowman presentation at the Festival of the Trees, and that was on behalf of the committee and the central office. And I want to thank Dr. Doxer for her work doing that.
It was fun, actually.
You... Go ahead.
Thank you. And thanks to everybody that bought raffle tickets to put in the bucket. It was pretty full, so that was awesome.
That was beautiful.
Some great books, thanks to White Land Books. So I have two reports. One is for Rakasa, and one is I had the great opportunity to go to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Mass Superintendents Conference in November. So the first, the first report is Rakasa. So last Thursday, November 29th, we were updated on the what's happening and learned that Julian De Angelis, who has devoted her heart and soul to our town, the outreach coordinator, is going to be retiring. So it's bittersweet, because she's wonderful, and we wish her all the best, but she's been great here. And another thing we learned was that after 10 years, and this was followed up with a meeting with the select board last night, after 10 years of grant funding, Rakasa is going to be town-funded. Hopefully, at the end of this budget cycle, it will be voted in. So as in a... Hopefully, at the end of this budget cycle, it will be voted in, so as in accommodated cost, and that will enable us to have the director and go back to having a full-time outreach coordinator. And that will really help them in all of the programs that they're working so hard to do. And those programs include Julianne, our outreach coordinator, has been working with the high school on the ESPERT, which means Screening Brief Intervention and Referral to Treatment. So she's been there with our nurses at the high school, making sure that, doing the state-mandated evaluation screening, so that we can catch problems and refer kids for supports before they become bigger problems. Also, they've been offering adult and youth first aid, and it's really amazing that they've trained over 750 people at this point. So that's 750 more people out in our schools. Every new teacher is required to do this. So all those people are more sensitive and trained in terms of what to do should they spot mental health issues arising or evolving. They also are recruiting now for a student, a high school student outreach team, and that team's going to go into the middle schools to teach about the dangers of vaping, which I think we all can recognize is an increasing problem. So engaging our kids in reaching out to other kids is a really powerful mechanism, and I can attest to that myself because I have two kids that were RACASA ambassadors, and they continue to do that work, so that's very exciting. They also have joined the Mystic Valley Public Health Coalition to work with educating parents of middle schools on how to talk to their children about substance abuse prevention, and they were part of the alcohol compliance that turned out 100% compliance in town. So that's not always the case. It was really a feather in our police and our town businesses' hat. Erica McNamara has also been working to educate herself and just went to a really exciting conference for two days on the science of the positive, which will, they're going to develop programs that come from looking, being proactive and looking positively for approaches to changing culture and attitudes in addressing mental health and substance use challenges. So it's very exciting, and I'm glad to be a part of it. Thank you. And so for the report, there's no way to capture what I experienced at the Mass Association of School Committees Conference in five minutes, so I've written a little something up that's going to be at the end of the packet. But in a nutshell, just to explain to folks, we have a little bit of a professional development budget for the school committee, so all that's paid for is the registration. Everything else comes from the school committee members who go. So we pay for our hotel, we pay for our meals, any speakers, that stuff. And I must say that being frugal really paid off for me because I shared a room with the Vice Chair of the Burlington School Committee, and I learned so much from her and from the people she introduced me to, and that's really what it's about. It's about stretching our wings and our minds and hearing and meeting other people from other committees and knowing and realizing that what we think is the only way is one way, and that there are other ways to approach things. And that's really liberating and really empowering, and I really appreciated the funding for the registration to be able to go to that. The first workshop I went to was really liberating because it was Aaron Polanski, who has presented here, and he's all about relationships, 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 and connections, and we see a lot of that happening in Redding with our teachers connecting with our students and the efforts to make sure that every student has a teacher that's supporting them or connected to them. And he, just to say, he showed a piece of the Butterfly Circus. If you have a minute to go, actually 20 minutes to go watch that online, Google it, the Butterfly Circus, it's what it's all about. Empowering our kids with whatever they come to school with to be successful, and for the social milieu to empower them as well. There were lots of different topics on school committee organization, engaging stakeholders, updates from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, and another organization that's just getting its legs called Coaching for Change, building a local diverse teacher pipeline. And so they're figuring out ways to help minorities choose to go into teaching and then attracting them to suburban and rural schools. So that was really exciting to meet them. The speakers were exciting. I know I don't want to keep going. And at this, I had the responsibility of being a part of the resolution committee. So during this conference, the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and Superintendents proposes resolutions to put forth to our legislators, and so there's a list of them, the links going to be in the minutes. But one of them, for an example, was rejecting the arming of educators. So the body took a stand to send forward that we are not in favor of arming our teachers and our educators. Talking about accountability standards, reproductive health education, gender identity-inclusive, athletic participation policies, and a bunch of other things. So I thank you very much for this opportunity. I really hope that I'll be able to apply it and share it with other school committee members as we go forward. Thank you.
Thanks. We appreciate that. Dr. Doxer represented the committee at the conference. I have two, I think, two reports. So one first, I would, I'm going to read a statement, but this is in regard to the ratification of the collective bargaining agreement. When we went into executive session at the beginning of this meeting, we voted to, I'm reporting that from that executive session, the Redding School Committee and the Town Manager, Robert La La Scher, voted to approve the collective bargaining agreement between the Redding School Committee and the Redding Teachers Association. So the agreement is a three-year contract expiring in August of 2021, and it has the following highlights. A cost of living increase or a COLA. You will hear people say COLA, and that's a capital C-O-L, capital C, capital O, capital L, capital A, not to be confused with any soft drink. So there was a cost of living increase in the first year of 2.5%, the second year 2.5%, and the third year 2.25%. This COLA is in addition to the increase in step and column adjustments for slightly more than half of our teachers. The language changes around meeting time that will support teaching and learning initiatives. There were several language changes. There were other language changes which will support our teachers and allow them to do their jobs more effectively. With this agreement, we now have collective bargaining agreements in place with all of our collective bargaining units. By having three-year agreements in place, it allows for budget certainty and stability in our school district. And I want to thank, I want to thank very much the negotiating teams of each of the bargaining units for their support in reaching these final agreements. I would also like to thank our negotiating team, Mr. Chuck Robinson, Dr. Darty, Gail Dowd, Jen Bovey, Joanne King, Sarah Marchant, for all their hard work since March to reach these agreements and achieve this closure. So we are very excited about that. Thank you. And I have another item. So on November 13th, I attended a Select Board meeting. Dr. Doxer was also in attendance. One of the highlights of that meeting was that Dr. Anna Ornstein was graciously respected, graciously, respectfully, and deservedly acknowledged with a really beautiful proclamation from the Select Board. There was a public discussion at that meeting, the specific agenda. The result of the agenda was the creation of an ad hoc committee, and there are both school committee representatives. So as the chair, I will be appointing two school committee representatives, and there's also representation by the school district, so Dr. Darty will address any school district participation that was initially noted or as it may evolve. And so with that in mind, I'm actually going to appoint Dr. Doxer and myself as the two representatives to the ad hoc committee. It wasn't really a big line, but we're very happy to do it, so.
Definitely.
I just also want to highlight, just, it sort of goes along with the incident that we had today. One of the things that Dr. Ornstein highlighted at the end of the meeting after the discussion was this idea of courageous conversations, and we've been talking about that in our schools, and I think Principal Hendricks was also referring to that. But what she was really emphasizing, and what some parents at the meeting were emphasizing, was the need to have these courageous conversations. In our homes with parents, and we've actually talked about where we have to recognize that it's not enough to just think that, you know, because you think you are not expressing bias, or you're in fact, you embrace diversity, that your kids are getting that. We have to be more explicit than that. And so I think that that's, that was a big takeaway from what Dr. Ornstein said. She was, I think, very empowered and energized at that end of that meeting and offered whatever she could do to help us do that, so that parents have the capacity to have the courageous conversations. And I think that, you know, that sort of sounds like what the dialogue has been that started on Monday at Birch Meadow School. So, you know, hopefully we continue to put those resources in place, but I think that was it. And the other thing is I am the rep to the HREC, Human Rights Advisory Committee. They're meeting tonight. The big thing on their plate right now is the Martin Luther King Celebration will be on the 21st of January, and they do all the organization and planning. So if anyone's interested in helping plan the Martin Luther King events, definitely just get in touch with someone on HREC. So I think that's it. Okay, so that's the consent agenda reports, and I think we're ready to move on to our new business, which is the late start update, committee update. I think I'm going to. Yeah. Thank you to the committee for our presentation today. I want to introduce members of our committee. I'm actually presenting with one of our co-chairs, or our tri-chairs, if you will, the principal of the high school, Kate, Kate Pointon. But we also have other members. Not all our members of our team are here today, but I just want to go over who was on our team, and if they're here, they can just kind of give us the high five. Our other tri-chair, Lena Williams, is up back. She is actually going to be a note taker for today, so as public comments come out or as school committee have any comments, we're going to take very accurate notes so that when we reconvene at some point, we have a memorialization of anything that is discussed. We also have Elaine Webb on the school committee, who attended our committee meetings this year. We had some staff members, Jess Bailey, who is a teacher at the high school, Sandy Calandrella, who is our after-school, before and after-school and adult ed director, Sarah Levesque, who is here tonight, elementary principal, Tom Zaya, who is here tonight, our assistant principal and athletic director, Lori Hurley. Oh, she came in. She said she was coming. There you are. We had a student from RHS, Drew Anderson. I don't think Drew's here tonight. And then we had our school resource officers as consult. They started out with our meetings, and they will be reintroduced into the group if approved, so that we can look at traffic patterns as it comes up. So a little bit of the history. I know the school committee is probably well-versed on this, but just in case you haven't been, several years ago, in my capacity in another district, I had heard about this, the Middle Sex League Superintendents. Based on the current research on high school brains and the fact that we're really learning more and more about how high school students, their brain development works, they made a commitment to really looking at adjusting the high school start time, which hadn't been done in a very, very long time, and making it later. So at that time, there was a late start working group that met in 2016. They actually didn't continue to meet based on some pressing issues in the community like budget overrides and really looking at personnel and staffing, and as well as some leadership changes. Kate and I are the product of some of those leadership changes. So a team was reformed this fall. We actually called some of the members, all of the members of the team, and we recommissioned the team, and we met several times this fall, and Kate's going to talk a little bit about what we decided our mission and our goals were.
Thanks, Chris. So our mission was to change the schedule. As many of our peer communities right now, five of the Middle Sex League schools have changed start times for the high school, for their high schools. So many of our peer communities have or will be moving to later start times, and we'll talk a little bit about that later in the presentation, that there's a commitment amongst all of the Middle Sex League schools to change start times if they have not done so already. So we'll be impacted if we don't, even if we don't change start times, we'll be impacted because other schools have. Our goals were to revisit the research on teen sleep patterns to get more up-to-date research as available, and then also to advise on how a later start time for Redding Memorial High School might impact our community. So we conducted surveys of all of the stakeholder groups in order to gather that information.
So our agenda tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about what the research is saying, how much teen sleep is really needed, and what the experts are saying. How much sleep are they getting in Redding? We do have some current data on that. What are the proposed changes that we are recommending? I know no vote will be taken tonight. And what consideration and challenges should we continue to plan for? So Kate's going to talk a little bit more about why we're considering this.
So why the high school start time change, sleep research, and this is back into the early 2000s and even a little bit earlier than that, and has continued to confirm this, is that teens have a later and different sleep cycle than young children and adults. And this is based on biology and their circadian rhythms, not just on lifestyle and technology choices. So much of the research, the older research that we looked at was pre-smartphone use, and so there's been a lot of pushback in terms of smartphones. And I would say that this has certainly complicated the issue, but we know that teen sleep cycles are different, and we know this from before when smartphones were a widespread, you know, widespread use amongst teens. So again, a complicating choice, but based on biology and circadian rhythms, teen sleep cycles are much different than adults or young children.
And we're going to talk a little bit about that. Kate, I think you were going to.
Yep. So we have a couple of different reports. You have the full text in the packet. So the American Pediatric Association talks about the need for teens to have between eight and a half and nine hours of sleep a night. You have that full text that you can read, that excerpt. I won't read it verbatim. Next slide. Same thing, the American Academy of Sleep Medicine from 2017, just last year, same thing, longer narrative that fully explains the need for teens to have this amount of sleep at night. And then our other current research supporting later starts, there's a list there, from the American Medical Association, the American Psychological Association, the MIAA, the NEA, National Sleep Foundation, and Society of Behavior Medicine. And there are hyperlinks to each and every one of these resources in your, in the packets, and then on digitally, online.
And we're setting up a website, and it's already actually set up, just not populated yet, with any information on late start, including this presentation, with the hyperlink. Or anybody in the community wants to look through some of, they don't have to hut and peck for it, we've added it all there for them. So what is the biology around sleep teen patterns? This is a small sketch of the brain. I'm not going to go through all the scientific words here, but we talked about circadian rhythms, and that's that daily pacemaker. That's the part of the brain that includes sleep-wake patterns. It also controls things like temperature, hormones, metabolism, all of that. And there's actually brain research that shows that that particular SCN, they call it, controls the brain. It looks different in teens than it looks in adults, and it looks different than in children. And that's part of why the circadian sleep patterns look different for children, especially in the ages of 14 to 18. And their natural sleep pattern, based on the research, is from 11:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So going to bed earlier and limiting screen time, which we are total fans of, and screen time actually limits melatonin production, which is our natural developed time actually limits melatonin production, which is our natural developed enzyme, the hormone that helps us sleep. That absolutely limits it when you're using screen time, especially at night. That can help with sleep patterns, but in the end, it's actually the physiological difference of a teen brain that makes them go to bed late and feel really drowsy in the morning. And not all kids feel that way, but the research is that most do. And here's something in your slide that actually shows the difference of the sleep patterns, the darker shade are children's sleep patterns, and then you can see as they move into adolescent. The good news is for us adults, it moves back. And you can tell that, we get really tired later and usually are peppier in the morning, at least I am. And here's another graphic, this is all in the packet and will be on the website, from the CDC and it talks about that kids nationwide aren't getting enough sleep, there just aren't, and that adolescents are at risk if they don't get enough sleep.
Oops.
Sorry.
One slide over. So we looked at our YRBS, the Youth Risk and Behavior surveys from back in 2015 and 2017. So what this slide shows is how much sleep our teens are getting, five hours or less, six hours, seven hours, eight hours. And we're seeing that our teens are not getting enough sleep. So in this slide, and there was a drop from 24% to 22% of our teens, this is our high school students, report getting eight or more hours of sleep at night. So a drop from 2015 to 2016 from our own data from 2015 and 2017 Youth Risk Behavior Survey. And then, so 24% of Redding high school students got eight hours, eight plus hours of sleep compared to 66% of middle schoolers. So that last sort of comparison bar graph, the purple to the light blue, 66% of our middle schoolers report getting more than eight hours of sleep, whereas only 24% of our high schoolers report getting that much sleep. And remember that it's eight and a half to nine and a half hours that are optimal amount of sleep for our teens to get. And that again is combined from the 2015 and 2017 YRBS. And then Redding high school students on this slide report slightly higher rates of eight plus hours of sleep compared to the state rate, but only 15% of seniors. So this to me was pretty striking, that far-right graph, only 15% of our seniors report getting enough sleep, more than eight hours of sleep. And you can see a steady decline from freshmen with the light blue, sophomore year gray, orange, red, which is our juniors, and then our seniors are getting not enough sleep, you know, not nearly enough sleep that they need.
And the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, and I know we have a local pediatrician here that hopefully will speak during our common, our open session, there's some real adverse effects with sleep deprivation. That's actually how they use it. They talk about teens not getting enough sleep as being sleep deprived. We use that as a term, kind of, oh, I'm sleep deprived, it's a casual term, but it actually does have health, social, emotional and risk effects. So one of the adverse effects, of course, is increased anxiety. When you're tired, you're more anxious. There is an increased level of depression and vulnerability to stress with teens that are tired and adults that are tired too. Decreased motivation, we know that, when you're tired, you're not as peppy and ready to go. Increased obesity rates, these are risks, I'm not saying that that's necessarily a Redding issue, although statistically nationally, we have to look at all of that, that teens that are tired and really sleep deprived are at risk for these health risks. And then other health-related, it certainly exacerbates any other medical conditions that folks may have. We also have safety risks that are based on current research, such as drowsy driving. I didn't include statistics on that, but it's pretty harrowing when you start looking at teenage accident rates and sleep when they're questioned about when they slept last, how long they slept, it's very alarming. Impulse control, which certainly goes into risky behaviors, and the next one is increased risk behaviors. We're also looking at performance rates, that students that are tired don't always perform as high as they should. They have lower academic achievement, they sometimes have impairments with executive functioning, that's that whole planning and getting things done, that internal voice that tells us how to really break apart complex problems and get it done. And working memory, that's when we have our short-term memory and we want to put it into our medium or long-term memory, that students that are tired have a really hard time with that. Decreased creativity, we know we have great creative minds in Redding. When you're tired, you're not as creative. Attendance and tardiness, again, based on national standards and certainly we're constantly looking at our attendance rates and our tardy rates as well. This last bullet to me was surprising, that student athletes that do not get at least eight hours of sleep are actually 2.3 times more at risk for sports-related injuries. Now maybe that's because of those executive functioning or not impulse control, but it also could be that the body is just tired and more weak. But they are really at risk for more injuries, that some of which could be really career-changing. So then, looking through many of the stakeholders' comments, some folks said, well, shouldn't they just go to bed earlier? And the answer is no, and maybe yes. No, in the sense that if your circadian rhythm is having you go to bed late, even if you go to bed early, you're not going to fall asleep. Now, not all kids fall into that, but most do, and this is based on science. The circadian rhythms of the sleep patterns really give a lot of kids extra burst. A lot of high school parents I talked to and I've known wrestle with that. You tell them to go to bed, they're dilly-dallying, who knows what, doing what, we're not sure. It's now 11 o'clock and everyone's still up in the house. And frankly, as an adult, we're tired. Many teens even forced, if forced to go to bed early, find it really hard to go to sleep before 11. And that melatonin, which is that natural hormone, that natural enzyme that keeps them sleeping, hopefully full sleep, it doesn't really dissipate from their system until approximately 8:00 AM. So when they have classes or they're up earlier than that, they're really very, very sleepy and we certainly have heard that. So what will, will they go to bed later if we change the times? And that came up in our surveys a lot. Well, researchers have found that high school students that have had different changes in their schedule, they actually don't add on another hour. So it wasn't like, okay, now I can sleep another hour, I'm going to stay up till midnight. That could happen and every kid is different, every child is different, but the researchers have found that because this really is a physiological condition, that typically kids have that natural cycle and especially with the supportive families we have in Redding, that will work on that and hopefully that 11 to 7:00 AM sleep time can really be fostered with a later
So we not only looked at the Middle Sex League and Chris will talk a little bit more about that in terms of what they're finding, where most school, the schools that changed in Middle Sex League changed for this year. We looked nationwide and Wilton, Connecticut, they changed their start time in 2003 and they found that students report sleeping that extra hour. And so the quote there is from 2009, they looked back, you know, fully six years after they had made the change. They found that no one is even looking back, our students are happier, performing at high levels academically, sports teams continue to be among the best in the state. They found really no adverse effects and that was back in 2009. They have continued with that late start today. So Wilton, Connecticut has that late start and are finding no ill effects. So this is just one snapshot of one school that has made the change. The change is now, you know, well over 10 years gone and they're not looking back at all, they've seen positive effects.
So as Kate mentioned earlier, we're in the Middle Sex League, we're one of 12 districts and right now, five of them have already made the change to late start. They're listed right there, Burlington, Melrose, Stonem, Watertown, Winchester. And the other communities are in the process of this planning. Some are planning it for next year or discussing planning it for next year, some are working on next year and the following year, planning for that. The league is already starting to schedule sports events for next year and even this year, because we have five districts that are ending, some of them well after 3:00, it has already impacted our sports schedule. So the athletic directors have actually already started drafting fall schedules based on the fact that more than half of the districts or half of the districts could be really changing their end times. And some of the other districts outside the Middle Sex League are, and some of these you might have heard of, Acton, Boxborough, these are all recent changes to their start, to their start and end time at a later time. Acton, Boxborough, Ashland, Concord, Carlisle, Duxbury, Eastham, Hingham, Holyoke, Marblehead, Marlboro, Monomie, Needham, Nossett, Sharon, Weston and Grand Dunstable's in the process. So there are a lot of districts making this change, looking typically at high school. And some of you might say, well, what about others? Some of the districts have made a universal change primarily because of busing. If they're a heavily bus district, it really does involve a complete change from elementary to middle school to high school and we'll talk about what we're proposing. So as part of our surveying, Tom Zaya and I surveyed some high school principals, some superintendents and some athletic directors. And those who have yet to make the change are in the process, just like we are, they're investigating it, they're looking at how that's going to impact them. Transportation is a big issue for buses, heavily bus districts. But some reported less students who were tardy and better overall attendance, the ones that made the change already. Some reported increased participation in breakfast at campus. High school breakfasts are not usually well-attended. That's been kind of a nice benefit, is that more kids come to school and eat breakfast and socialize at that time. And some reported opportunities for slower pace in the morning, including student support time at 8:00 AM rather than 7:00 AM. So making up a quiz, asking for extra help, the 8:00 AM time definitely lets kids kind of get here and do that in ways that they hadn't really expected.
Do you want to click it?
Yeah.
Go for it. So current RMHS start time is 7:30 and our end time is 2:11. We have a proposed new start time for 8:30 and a proposed new end time at 3:02. And we reviewed our high school schedule, that's with the addition back in of office hours. And we took a look and proposed to have the same length for each period of the day, with the exception of first period. We shaved off a couple minutes on first period and a minute or two here and there to get us to the 3:02, a couple extra minutes that first period for announcements. One thing we were very committed to doing was to not impact passing time, it's at four minutes and we cannot feasibly, given the size of the building and the crowding in the hallways, shave off any time in passing time. So that is maintained at the four minutes. And we also felt very strongly to not be the latest district, not be the latest school in the district. So we worked kind of creatively and I have Krista thank for this, to be able to do the audit on time on learning, the full audit, that allowed us to shave a few minutes off to give us that 3:02 dismissal time. So that is our proposal. We took into consideration, the considerations and challenges with moving to a later start time for staff and we really want to, if the school committee approves this, want to work with staff to help mitigate impact. And so we looked to assess and support the impact on staff and their families, schedules and commutes. We looked at the impact on traffic and the ability to lead clubs and student support. Here's a graph of what our staff, and it's pretty well evenly split if you take a look, the traffic and commute, childcare, extracurriculars and then others. Some shared benefits such as students sleeping later and being less sleepy, so some staff members were in support of this. Several also mentioned benefits such as last-minute lesson planning and feeling less rushed as a teacher. There were people who had wide ranges of opinions on the start time from pros and cons, but the concerns were evenly split. Some of the considerations to support staff include committing to have staff meetings before school so that we're not keeping people much later at the end of the day. Consideration for other movement of meetings to become before-school offerings, opportunities for student support times before school, but not before 8:00. Formation of a scheduling committee to consider other changes of schedules during the day, potentially for the school year of 2020 to 21. I think this does offer us an opportunity to take a look globally at our schedule to see if it's meeting our students' needs. It has not been changed, I think, in over 10 years. The schedule, I think, was changed maybe in 2006, 2007. So for me, it's an opportunity to take a look at the schedule, are we meeting our students' needs and should we make some tweaks to sort of globally the schedule? Not for next year, that's a more long-term process, but for potentially 2021 or 21, 22.
So as we looked at our mission to really look at assessing the needs of the families, the students and the community at large, if we were to make a move to a later start time, some of the things that we considered were assessing of any change and especially in the impact of traffic on our local community, maintaining community access to shared fields, especially lit fields, and I know that came up in the surveys quite a bit, transportation and then continuing to review impact on the overall community and organizations. So this is part of the work that we have been doing and will continue to do if we move forward with this. So, oops, sorry. We had 1,500 respondents to the survey, about 473 students and about 1,000 parents, a few community members, which was a huge response. We left it open for two and a half weeks and we did get a huge response. Some of the community members are saying some of the benefits are increased sleep, some aren't sure or not, don't think that there may be. We have happy and healthy teens, learning enhanced, less rushed, tardy, and then we had a whole lot of others, one or two of this and one or two of that. Some of the concerns that were shared, a lot of them have to do with sports participation and if, will this impact sports participation, especially with shared fields? And we're going to talk about some of the things that we're discussing in preparing for this, if this is the way we're going. Traffic around town, a lot of people talked about that, club participation, childcare, that came up as a smaller issue, but maybe an issue, after-school employment of teens, you know, having to go to work a little later. And then obviously, transportation is always a consideration. So what are some of the specific concerns? Basically, it came down to sports, traffic, extracurricular, employment, all of that, childcare, transportation, kind of what we expected. What I can tell you is we only had 117 people that actually shared these concerns. So out of the 1,500, only 117 shared these specific concerns. So what are we proposing to consider as we move forward, if we move forward, is that we would open our library in our cafeteria before school with breakfast in the cafeteria and hopefully, like other districts, see an increase of breakfast and time around that. We currently keep the library open in the afternoon, some of that time or maybe all of that time might be shifted to the morning. That's part of what we'll look at, is how heavily would it be used so that students who can meet and want to come to school early, their circadian rhythms look different and they're ready to start their homework in the morning or continue their homework in the morning, it'll be available for them. We are also talking about forming a homework committee to discuss homework policy. One of the things, as we reviewed the 1,500 surveys and I read through every single one that came up absolutely over and over and over again, was parents concerned about the amount of homework that we have in the high school and that kids are really exhausted from that, they're up way too late finishing homework. So we need to really have a committee to talk about what does that look like, not to, you know, say no homework, but really, let's look at what homework looks like and let's look at what reasonable homework expectations are. The RMHS leadership, and that includes Tom Zaya and his team, as well as Kate and I and anyone else at the high school, we're going to work with coaches and advisors on scheduling and really look at hard end times. You know, again, we're all about the success of Redding, we love the fact that we are such a successful district, sports, arts, all of it. We hear it every day and we're so proud of them, but sometimes we, some of these practices, some of these play practices, all of it, it goes really, really late and we're going to look at that and say, you know, again, we want our kids to be home in bed and feeling good about the next day ahead of them. And that doesn't mean that we don't value the time at any of these sports or arts participation, but we really have to look at that. Opportunities for student support before school, a lot of times teachers have office hours after school. We want to be sensitive to the fact that with the later end time, our staff may be leaving right, right as school ends and really publicizing that, that they may be available based on their own needs. based on their own needs with student support time before school. As Kate mentioned, putting together a scheduling committee that will also include student voice on that around what kind of scheduling changes might we want to consider. Working with the SRO, our School Resource Officers, and our Police Department about what traffic might look like. We definitely heard from other districts that they're still working on traffic patterns. We've already started that conversation, and if approved, we'll continue it. And then working with recreation facilities and other outside agencies to help with field and building schedules. And I can tell you, Tom Zaya and I have already started having conversations with the recreation, the Y, and other outside agencies about what that would look like. Now, obviously, we only have a limited amount of buildings and facilities and fields, but we're going to do the best we can and really try to be very equitable around that. So these are the considerations that we have. So this is our, that's the last slide. This is our report. And we're open for questions or comments from the school committee.
I'll take questions from the committee first. Thank you. And I don't know, we might need to have Lynn and Tom come forward.
Okay.
Mr. Bobbin.
Great presentation. You answered my first question coming into tonight, which was, if we extend by an hour, will people actually sleep? It sounds like they do from the research. It's the best you can do. I thought that was very well presented. I have a safety concern that comes from having stood outside of the high school in an election year, holding a sign in the cold at 7:30 in the morning. And what I've observed when I did that, and this is a few years ago, is that there are very defined waves of traffic in front of Birch Meadow and then in front of Coolidge, and then in front of the high school under the current, well, I'm sorry, now it's the high school first, then Birch Meadow, then Coolidge. And it's about a 10-minute window for each school, about 15 minutes before that first bell. And it's remarkably efficient for the number of cars that come and go. And if parents who have been in that line know that the rules, right, they're very well enforced, and people kind of know how to order their day around that. There are a lot of cars that go in and out of the high school. A lot of those are driven by students. And so I think having the Redding Police Department guide how we roll this out, if we roll this out, is going to be critical. Because you've got a few things colliding here. So if we put this at 8:30, you're looking at instead of a 15 to 7:25 wave at the high school, where it's just, it's a just continuous line of cars coming off of Main Street, Route 28, onto Oakland Road. Oakland Road is nice and wide. I have seen people try to go around that line of cars through where the parking spaces are and drive where they're not supposed to and go racing by it well in excess of 20 miles an hour. And I've seen that repeatedly. People late to drop off at Coolidge, people trying to cut through, doing who knows what. There's always going to be people stressed and late, right? And so when you mix the teenage driving brain with the adult, I'm late to work, brain and the kids, the other thing is that parents will drop off for Coolidge sometimes on the high school side of that road, on Oakland Road. And so you have kids, young kids darting across the road, and you don't see them to, no, there's a crossing guard. Everybody uses the crossing guard. And so I'm going on a little bit, because I am really concerned about the safety of everybody involved. So aside from this, there's a significant non-trivial component of how do we root traffic? How do we have a heavy police presence, particularly in the beginning, so people know that the rules will be enforced and we're really serious about safety? And, you know, you're going to get caught if you cheat, right? That's the kind of culture we need to roll out with this. So I just, I appreciate that last point, the second and last one, where you were working with the Police Department. I just want to say that's really important to me.
And just as a comment, that's why the SROs are part of our committee. They came to our first meeting, and we talked about some of the concerns we had around traffic and safety. If approved, they're going to now be part of our planning team, and we're going to go from there. They already generated a bunch of ideas.
Along those lines, there's an opportunity at this site to rectify and really create some patterns that could, that would do that. And I think the SROs definitely are aware of that and indicated that, and there's some new information available. So I think that's excellent. Ms. Robinson.
Did, I don't know why I saw Tom way in the back. Have we gotten any, do we have any feedback on how the other towns that are doing it already affected Redding this year, our athletes?
Tom, do you want to come up to a mic? You definitely need to.
It doesn't have to be you. I just know that.
It should be Tom. Thanks, Tom.
You're welcome. In the league, this is the first year that we've had the later starts. So we've pushed our game schedules back by about a half hour, 40 minutes. The times that schools are getting out, Watertown right now is the latest. They were getting to us at about 4:30 for a 4:00 game. So it depends a little bit on that. But we're sort of looking at this year as athletic directors as, how is this going to work? And then we're going to reconvene and see what we're going to plan for next year. So even right now, Redding's not a late start. We're still being affected by the other five communities.
So raising my hand for myself. So what was the, what's the range of the end times of those five districts?
Yeah, I left that paper over.
Okay. Just because you're saying they get here at 4:30, but, you know, is there?
I think, I believe Watertown might be the latest, 3:09.
Winchester's 3:07. Watertown is 3:05, actually. Winchester's 3:07. And I think there's one, Burlington's 3:05.
So. And I think all the data leading up to the decision is all good and all makes sense. And then if we do make this decision, I just, we're going to make sure we think about all the things it's impacting. And I think the, you know, we have a lot of information about what, how it's going to impact the Middlesex League issues. And I think it's important that we also iron out what, how's that ripple effect on the youth that are, and you said it, we don't have enough, you know. So I think that, you know, we just got to have creative, and I can think of some ways that we can use other venues that we're not using after dark now. And, you know, especially, you know, in the early spring, when you're dealing with, you know, like lacrosse and stuff. And then in the later fall with Pop Warner and stuff, because all those organizations pay for the fields, they're all taxpayers, and we just need to be mindful of that we have a solution to offer them, might not be, but something, so that they can continue to do the good things they do for kids in this community.
Right, yeah. And we agree with that totally. We, myself, I talk with the Recreation Director daily, even right now, about trying to find equitable ways. If we give up a day, can we steal some time here, or you borrow time there? And I think there's going to be even more of that that we'll do, looking at different days, and yeah, extended some hours, maybe.
One of the things that came up in our meeting with the Recreation Director is that some of those outside agencies are actually waiting now. Because if Tom has reserved a game for four and we're waiting for a bus to get here, that, you know, that has now had a trickle-down effect. So the good news is that if we schedule accordingly based on a little bit later of an end time, that, you know, people won't be waiting around. I think that's a frustration, too, is if you come for an outside agency and you think you're starting at X time and you're waiting around because the high school hasn't finished yet. But we're going to be working with Jenna and with the Rec Department and any of the other outside. We've offered to talk to them as well.
I mean, Watertown, I think that's, that's a place that either coming or going to is very congested with traffic. And I can see a bus sitting on 128 or however way they get here. And why is it that when you get together as athletic directors or superintendents or why is everyone have a different, why don't we all pick the same time? Like if we're at 3:00, why isn't that, why are some at 3:07 and some at?
Start or end time or our game times?
No, end time, start and end time.
So, I don't know. Some of it has to, so some of it has to do with their transportation schedules, because they have tiered buses. They have to do it that way. Some of it has to do with time and learning schedules. As Kate mentioned, we went through every single day of the year and made sure that we are more than satisfying our requirements for the state. So some districts have different things. They have different passing times. They have shorter passing times. They have more passing times. Some districts have block scheduling or flex time that doesn't count for time on learning, different things. So each district has little different nuances. We worried about our schedule and made sure that we're meeting our requirements, but that's part of why they all look a little bit different.
And I just have one other thing to add.
Ms. Robinson.
A bunch of things, but I'll just, one other, just to Mr. Bobbin's point, and I get, what is the, so right now, the high school will be starting, or starting at 8:30 now. When does Coolidge actually start? Does that start around?
I don't have that.
Coolidge is 7:50. Coolidge is 7:50.
Okay. So, and there is, there is still a lag between, but Birch Meadow will be starting at?
8:15.
8:25.
Okay. So we're adding, we're combining kind of all that traffic together, but Coolidge is still a little bit?
Yeah, it'll be.
Yeah, Coolidge isn't changing.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just had one thing I wanted to add in, on the end times. I think that this is something that we, you know, we do need to work on in terms of, you know, obviously, when students are at some sort of competitive event and they're, whether it's here or away, the competitions are, you know, if it's wrestling, if every match goes into overtime, it's a long, long competition. And so, you know, you're at home, when are my kids getting home, you know, to sort of get that, finish up any homework and sort of stay unplugged and get to bed? So I think that the work, there is work that needs to be done across the board. So I appreciate that that's, you know, that's going to be part of the dialogue. And I also just want to say, in terms of, I think, Kate, you raised the issue, or Krista did, that, you know, this issue is not just because of smartphones, but I think it is worthy to note some of the data, that the type of screen time that you're having in the evening can influence you, whether it's sort of passive or interactive. And I know I would often get into an argument with my kids, because I'm telling them, no, you know, no computers in your bedroom, no phones. We held off the video. I was the mean mom. But they would say, well, you're watching TV, you know. But there is a difference between the passive and the interactive. And I think overall, anyway, we're all going to be, as we go forward, reading about some of the more recent data that's sort of, it seems to be charging out of Silicon Valley lately. But, you know, on what's the right thing to do? So that's part of it. But it wasn't, it was the issue around, you know, what's, the sleep and the circadian rhythms has been there before the screens. So I appreciate you kind of clarifying that. I'm going to do Dr. Doxson.
I wanted to say thank you so much for this inclusive. I was really hoping for all the research to be integrated, and you did just that. I really appreciate that. And I also appreciate a lot of the letters that we got with provocative questions and other points of view. I think, I really appreciate when we hear from people with their questions as well. One of the things that came crystal clear through is something you've mentioned, that it's not just about changing the start and end times, it's also about the education that goes along with it. You know, the kids are anxious. Kids are using energy drinks to stay awake. That's a drug to me. The coffees at the middle, at the beginning of the day, recognizing those things, but also recognizing the power of the cell phones at the end of the day. I, if my husband's watching, I admit it, I'm bad. I have to shut it off. I don't do it well. But there are ways that we can work with one another and with the parents to empower ourselves to shut those addictions down and to find those apps that will help us. I know that I have found an app on my computer that tells me you are going to have to wake up in six hours. You are going, and it changes the light on my device that helps me so that I found I can fall asleep faster. But those are kinds of things that can be resourced through us when we're trying to make this successful change. And I really appreciate that you reached out both to the families, to the families and to the staff, and also to our neighbors, the other communities that are doing this. I don't think we have to remake the wheel in terms of taking two years that some other community has done. I think that if we've done our research and we talk to everybody's concerns, that we can make an educated decision for our students, because they're really central to this. I like that the idea of respecting the teacher's day so that they might be able to have their meetings beforehand, when they're used to being here anyways. And also setting that rule, guideline, policy, I'm not sure which it would be, about not putting student meetings before school, because that window now exists, whether it's for student support or whether it's for early practices. I used to practice soccer at 6:30 in the morning. That wouldn't help our late start anymore. And sometimes, an opening just sucks people in. So having a policy or a guideline like that, I really like that idea. So thank you for this research. I know that even when we take this vote, the process is not over. Thank you.
Ms. Bobbin.
Yes, the next set of questions are around compliance. And as you've done in the past, you answered my first question, which was just confirming that we're getting the state-required number of minutes on, in every category that's applicable. So time on learning, number of minutes, and instruction in a year and a day and so forth. So assuming that's been done. One thing we haven't talked about and none of the slides have addressed are making sure that we're still able to meet our obligations for special ed students, in particular, to the extent we have out-of-district placements with transportation schedules. We also, apart from special ed, have a Medco program that involves transportation and busing. Can you speak to meet, what you've done to make sure we're meeting the obligations that we already have for those students?
So as far as students who are in district, if we make this change, that change will be made. We'll work with any of the transportation organizations, you know, North Redding, transportation, any of the services that we currently employ, we will work with them. That'll be part of the planning process. Jason Cross and I, we meet very regularly. We actually met yesterday again to talk about how this will impact. Currently, there are two Medco buses. We may have to reshuffle that deck a little bit. Right now, he has K to 6 on one bus and 7 to 12 on another. Right now, the high school bus typically picks them up at 2:55, 2:30 or so. So this isn't a huge change. He's actually excited about the morning for the Medco high school kids. One of the things that we are tracking and we are concerned is that if you are not a resident of Redding and you miss the bus, quite often, that means a no-school day. So if you're one minute late for the bus and they're gone, you're now out of a day. So he is excited to see if this would help us with that, because that is something that we're working really closely on, tracking that data and working with families. So I see this as a plus.
More able, more able to get to the bus on time.
Yep.
Yeah, and Jason Cross is our Medco director.
Just to call up.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, Jason Cross is our Medco coordinator, sorry, director.
Sure. So my point in asking that isn't that you wouldn't do that. It's that, look, these buses don't sit around all day and do nothing. They have other routes. And so I just don't want, I want to make sure that we're not in a situation where we're making assumption we haven't tested as a group, saying, oh, well, the bus that we usually get hypothetically at 7:00 is going to be available at 8:00. It may not be. I'm just going to make sure. And if it is available at 8:00, is the cost structure the same, or does it cost more? I don't know. So just make sure that we're able to keep all the commitments we've made to Medco.
The cost would be the same. As far as the schedule goes, if we have middle school and high schools on the same bus, they would come at the middle school start time. So that would give them student support time. And Jason and I already started talking about what could that look like? It's exciting to think of the possibilities. Right now, it goes on the high school start time. So again, the middle schoolers that ride that bus have to be on that bus really early. So this is going to, this is going to change that kind of conundrum that we're in right now with the very, very early pickup time.
No, I think it has a lot of potential to improve the circumstances for everyone.
But thank you for asking the question.
And on the special ed side, do we have your commitment that this is not going in any way, you know, impact our ability to meet the needs of anybody on an IEP or any of our special ed students?
We absolutely are always committed to that.
Okay.
Are there any other committee members? Not a lot. We've had some community members who signed up to speak.
We're going to go over there and we can answer questions from there. I just want to give folks the podium so that they have a.
Autumn Hendrickson and David Corey had signed up, so I would take those folks first in order, and then if there's other people here, just raise your hand. I.
Alicia.
Yep, we'll try to just be cognizant that there's a bunch of people here who want to speak, and we try to have the comments take just a couple of minutes. Good, Autumn.
All right. Thank you. My name is Autumn Hendrickson, and I am currently a junior at RMHS. As an active member of the student body at RMHS, the proposal that would change school hours at my high school from 7:30 a.m. to 2:11 p.m., to 8:30 a.m., to 3:02 p.m., deeply concerns me. And as you can probably imagine, that is what I'm here to talk about. I want to start my remarks by saying this. I am very familiar with the research that is being used to back up this proposal. People who know me know that I am a complete nerd, so this type of research is no stranger to me. I am aware of how many neighboring communities have done this, but it would be a logical fallacy to say that because neighboring communities have changed their school start times, we should too. Every community is different. I am also aware of the benefits of having more sleep and later start times for schools by proxy, but I hope that the argument I am about to present might help you to understand how the later start times will probably not achieve the goal you are hoping for. The reality that we are going to be looking at now is simply having all of our schedules pushed back by one hour, which is something that I found was a consensus among everyone that I spoke to, for the most part. The only thing that we, that we'll be changing is the time at which we are doing things. Teachers will continue to assign the same amount of work. Practices and extracurricular activities will be the same length, and we will be going to bed and getting up one hour later. We will, in essence, get the exact same amount of sleep. In order to prepare for this speech, I went around asking my classmates three questions. How much homework did they have a night, hours and hours? What time did they go to bed? And what kind of extracurriculars did they participate in? The results I got were not surprising, but it did surprise me how shocked adults were when I recited these numbers to them. The average amount of homework each night came out to roughly four hours, with the lowest amount being one freshman who said 30 minutes and the highest being two juniors saying eight hours. Let that sink in for a second. Eight hours, eight. I initially thought they were joking. Don't believe me? What I learned over the course of the survey day made it clear to me that it wasn't out of the realm of possibility, since their homework was staggered by both of their extracurriculars. Marching band and color guard practices run from 5:45 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. Most sports practice for at least two hours after school. Many students also said they worked jobs. Most extracurriculars lasted roughly one hour. And drama rehearsals run from 2:45 p.m. to 5:00 p.m. on Mondays, Tuesdays, and Wednesdays, and from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. on Thursdays. This is absolutely insane. Any high school-aged kid has every reason in the world to not be able to sleep at night. We have so many other things going on that by the time 11 o'clock rolls around, we're praying that we finished our homework. What we really need to be talking about here is how stress impacts students. For God's sake, half the reason why we can't sleep is due to stress, which has been proven by many studies to significantly hinders one, hinder one's ability to sleep. Teenagers today are expected to not just complete the class, their class and homework, but to do so with care and thought, attend at least one extracurricular activity, participate in their chosen sports, practices, and games, be a role model for younger children, be an active member of their community, get enough exercise every day, take care of their mental health, maintain and create close friendships with others, forge relationships with, or at the very least, respect their teachers and mentors, love and care for their family members, successfully avoid getting involved with the wrong people, resist peer pressure, figure out who they love, learn to love themselves, get the proper amount of sleep each night, balance their crazy schedules, and somehow, find time to be a kid, to relax. So, you might be inclined to say at this point, well, this should relieve stress. Lack of sleep is a really big stressor for our students. Well, according to the Reading Public Schools 2017 Student Survey, a measly 6% of our RMHS students cited lack of sleep as their primary negative stressor. The largest percentage belonged to none other than schoolwork, at 36%, followed by being too busy, at 24%, worrying about their future, at 10%, 10%, school expectations at 10%, and family or personal situations at 9%. Enrollment data for Reading Memorial High School, provided by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, says that during the 2017-18 school year, there were 1,235 students at RMHS. So, using that information, I can tell you that 444 of your RMHS students cited schoolwork as causing them the most stress, and just under 300 cited being too busy as their primary stressor, while 74 of your RMHS students cited that lack of sleep was their main source of stress. The truth is that stress and sleep go hand in hand, which is backed up by findings from the American Psychological Association, or APA, which I will sum up by saying this. According to the APA, if you are stressed, you don't sleep, and if you don't sleep, you're more stressed. And making such a drastic change within our community in the name of sleep, along with a pact signed by neighboring communities, will do absolutely nothing if you do not also address the stress that your students are under, because it's not going to go away just because we start school at 8:30, end at 3:02, and maybe get an extra hour of sleep. A pact signed by Middlesex League superintendents to implement this change should not take precedence over the needs of this community. Lastly, I do quickly want to address the faculty's side of this issue, because I think it's incredibly important. These teachers, as I said during the campaign for the override last year, are what make Reading, Reading. The reason why this community is still known for its schools is because through all the struggles, both financial and social, our teachers have stepped up to the plate at a great personal cost to care for their kids, their students. Just because these people work for the school district does not mean they are disposable. Of course, you will find someone to hire when teachers leave the Reading Public Schools because of this schedule change, but when you choose to treat these teachers as well, as what they are, essentially employees, you are choosing some brand-new teacher over, over teacher who has dedicated their heart and soul to this community. The many fires that burn within our teachers' hearts, that burn solely for this community and this job, will be forced to leave, because even though they cared for their community, their community did not seem to care for them. As I finish up here, I do want to share that I made sure to discuss what people believed could actually make this work, when I, when I brought this up. And just one last comment to everyone here. Anyways, when I broached the subject of the late start with my peers, as well as some teachers, everyone seemed to agree on two main things. The absolutely insane amount of schoolwork and extracurricular hours needs to be addressed, along with, not separately, the concept of a late start, and that an 8:00 a.m. to 8:20 a.m. start would be much more helpful and much more doable. Finally, I want to make it abundantly clear that I am in no way personally against Dr. Dougherty, Ms. Kelly, or anyone on the school committee. As I have said before, I love this town, and the reason why I am speaking here tonight with such passion and intensity is because this is something that I, as well as many of my peers, whom most, if not all, could not attend because they are currently doing homework. Thank you.
David Corey? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm David Corey. I'm a Reading resident. I also happen to be married to a schoolteacher here at the high school, so I get that perspective at home as well. I came tonight to speak in support of the change to the school's start time. I've been paying attention to the research around school start times for about 15 years. I've been wondering for about a decade, when is Reading going to do something about this? And I, there's something that I saw on the way in to this building this evening. It's on the wall, right across from the main office, and one of the lines on the item that's up on the wall, it says, "Science is Real." And I think the science is real is something that we need to pay attention to. There's a lot of things that are logistical considerations, that are all very real, absolutely. And I want to applaud the committee for identifying all of those issues and taking steps to address them. But those are things that I think we need to build around the basic facts that are not changeable, which is the science around circadian rhythms and the teen population. And the science and research in other schools and whatnot, which you pointed out, shows that kids do get an extra hour of sleep. I applaud you for considering some of the things that, that were just brought up around practice times, a homework committee to look at the amount of homework, because I agree with a lot of your statements there. So, I applaud you for looking at it systemically. But I do think that, that the fundamental unchangeable piece here is the science around teens' sleep schedules, circadian rhythms. And I think we need to listen to that and then arrange the other parts of our educational ecosystem to, to reflect and honor that. So, I, I want to encourage the school committee to adopt this change, because I think it's really positive for the students, which should be what we're about. I also want to say, from a teacher standpoint, because I, I happen to actually talk to my wife, and she talks to other teachers, as you can imagine, you know, there are mixed opinions. She is in favor of this as well, and there are a lot of teachers that are in favor of it as well, for a lot of the same reasons that you pointed out, in terms of kind of less chaos in the morning, a more relaxed start. There are, in fact, some adults who don't like getting up early, and so benefit them as well. So, I, I think there are a lot of reasons to do it, and a lot of, a lot of issues which you've identified, which are, to my mind, all manageable. So, I, I want to encourage you to, to adopt the change.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Williams?
I don't even have a high school student. I have something to say. This has a ripple effect that I want the committee to really think about and be thoughtful about this when they make a decision. I'm a Birch parent, and I'm in Nick's kind of area where he lives on town, and I have to tell you that the traffic that, coming from probably Grove Street and heading towards Birch Meadow by the Y to get over to Coolidge into the high school is a nightmare. This is the most congested part of town. So, this really needs to be thoughtful. It needs to be, there needs to be a ton of discussion about traffic patterns before this. This can't just be, okay, let's change the time and let's, let's vote. The piece that I haven't heard about that's making me a little frustrated is that the YMCA is right there. In most schools, what happens is the parents drop off, you know, 8:12, 8:15, and then they fly over to the YMCA to get parking, because there's no parking over there. And then you have the Birch parents trying to drop off at the same time. And Nick, I'm sure you live this reality, it's really, really tough over there. And then you add in high school students who are going to be trying to get to school on time. And the other thing that is, you know, I want to mention is that with Birch, you know, when I'm standing there at the end of the day for pickup, I see high school students walking over for pickup, and they're grabbing the kindergarteners. There are some parents in this town who have kindergarteners and high school students, and they pick up those kids, they walk them home. And one of the biggest pieces, which really needs to be thought of, is RISE. We have to remember that we have special education students who start at 8:30 in this high school, and I have firsthand seen students, high school students, fly up the back of the building and almost run over special education children who have no safety awareness, whose parents have let go of them, and they have gone flying towards the street and car, and it's, it's a recipe for disaster. So, if we're going to shift this start time, that needs to, RISE has to be a really big discussion with this. So, thank you. Oh, and I just also wanted to tell you that there's also a contingent of parents that should be here from Parker, and they're not, and it was, I got a message saying that that should be mentioned, because there's a concert tonight.
Doctor, did you want to respond to any of that?
I just want to talk to the RISE piece here at the high school. So, we've, we've already had those conversations, and RISE, if, if the school committee supports this, we will be changing the RISE time next year.
There any other comments on this topic? Yep, you can come to the mic and state your name, please.
Hi, I am Dr. Jennifer Corwin. I'm a board-certified pediatrician, and I practice here in Reading. I'm also a Reading resident and a mom to two future Reading public school students. I'm here tonight on invitation of Assistant Superintendent Kelly, who had asked me to come to speak briefly about the evidence behind the delayed school start times. The, she actually summarized quite well in her presentation. The American Academy of Pediatrics believes that insufficient sleep for adolescents is a significant problem, so much so that the body released a policy statement in 2014 recommending delaying school start times for both middle and high schools to no earlier than 8:30 a.m. Insufficient sleep is not a new problem, nor is it a problem solely for adolescents. However, adolescents are more at risk for inadequate sleep than the general population. When puberty begins, adolescents experience a phased delay in their sleep-wake cycle, meaning they experience a later time of sleep onset and morning-wake time, a shift of up to two hours compared to pre-pubertal sleep cycles. This is due to two factors. One is that melatonin, a hormone responsible for the onset of sleep, is secreted at a later time during adolescence. And two is that the sleep drive, or the pressure to fall asleep after many hours of wakefulness, accumulates more slowly during adolescence. These two factors result in adolescents finding it much more difficult to fall asleep before 11:00 p.m. However, studies have shown that an adolescent's need for sleep does not change from pre-adolescence. They typically, as we saw, still require eight and a half to nine and a half hours of sleep per night. Long story short, teenagers fall asleep later, but they still need, on average, nine hours of sleep a night. Biology is telling us that teenagers are better suited to fall asleep around 11:00 p.m. and wake up around 8:00 a.m. The consequences of chronic sleep deprivation in adolescents are severe and long-ranging, affecting physical health, safety, and mental health. Risks include an increased incidence of obesity, metabolic dysfunction, like high cholesterol and diabetes, hypertension, and as anecdotally, a healthcare provider in Reading, I can say this is a huge problem for our population, an increase in drowsy driving, other risk-taking behaviors, an increase in the non-medical use of stimulants, of caffeine, an increase in depression and anxiety, executive function impairments, as well as lower levels of physical activity and lower academic achievement. There are multiple factors at play, not all of which are modifiable, but school start times are one factor that can be changed. Multiple studies have shown that delaying school start times results in increased total hours of sleep per night and a decreased percentage of students reporting inadequate sleep. Delaying school start times has not been shown to result in later bedtimes, but has been shown to result in increased hours of sleep per night, increased academic performance and school attendance, and a decreased incidence of depression and fatigue. Delayed school start times has also been linked with significant decreases in the incidence of car accidents. The evidence is clear that our teachers are, that our teenagers are sleep-deprived, and it is having a, it's having significant impacts on their health. As a pediatrician, I agree with the AAP that delaying school start times has been proven effective in increasing teenagers' total hours of sleep and well-being. And I also have a letter to the same effect, signed by myself and eight other area Reading pediatricians, which I'd be happy to leave for the record.
Could you please give that to Mrs. Angelson? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dr. Corwin.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Robinson?
So, I just wanted to ask Dr. Dougherty, so, you, you just mentioned that, that RISE is going to start later. I mean.
RISE at the high school.
That's just not, that, that's another disruption, though. That's a discussion we should be having as a committee, just, just changing the RISE time. I'd rather know that we've looked at traffic patterns and stuff before we made that decision.
No, no, this is RISE at the high school, because it gets, it would start at the same time as the high school.
Right.
It was discussed that the late, the late start committee actually brought that up. So, it's just because you, just because of the traffic concerns that, as, you know, Mr. Bobin and others have, have raised.
Mr. Bobbin and others have raised, actually, that was one of the early discussions we had, I think, with the SROs there, that that might be a consideration, that there might need to be an adjustment at the high school, and, you know, whether that is overall at the other sites, I think, is something that...
We have already made those adjustments at the other schools for RISE, and actually Half Day K this year. We've made those start time changes. So we've already done that for this year, based on other factors.
But if RISE is starting at 8:30 now at the high school?
Correct.
And what is that going to change to? I mean, I'm just thinking, that's a whole separate community that we should be getting information out to. We're going to change the RISE start time? What's the, I don't remember what the enrollment is there.
At the one here?
Yeah.
It's probably about 70 students.
So, I mean, that's a...
We're not talking about a drastic change. We're talking about enough.
A few minutes.
Yeah. All of the traffic patterns, they're in five-to-10-minute increments. I mean, I've watched the traffic patterns just like you have on voting days. And it's chaos for seven to 10 minutes at each school. Every neighborhood, we're all neighborhood schools here. So all of the traffic is chaos at a school for seven to 10 minutes. And then all of a sudden, it just disappears. So the whole key is, is how do you balance that in the different areas? So RISE would only change by a few minutes to compensate for that change in traffic.
And again, I think there's some things about patterns that, at this site, that need to be looked at. And we've been told year over year that, you know, it needs to be looked at as part of an overall strategy. So I think that absolutely has to happen.
Well, I think that, then, that's my point. We should be looking at that in conjunction with whether we change the time.
But I think that that's part, that would be, if we vote to change the time, then that has to, those changes are going to need to be made. And whether or not committee members are, you know, part of those ongoing working groups, I'm sure we, if there are working groups, we could, we would be, if that's appropriate. But I think it's, so it was, it was one of the earliest discussions with the SROs at the working group. I think, I think what I'm hearing, Mr. Robinson, say is that it's partially traffic that we're thinking about. It's also partially the disruption of the plans of the families that are dropping their kids off at RISE.
Communication, that's what it is.
And making sure that we're engaging them too along the way, and not making a decision about one thing and then saying, oh, by the way, you're impacted too, even though you had no voice. So just to make sure that we include them in the conversations.
Right. But just to be clear, the reason why RISE is unique from all of the other situations is because you've got 1,250 kids coming into the same place as 73- and 4-year-olds. So that is going to have to change, no matter what.
Right. I just...
Dr. Doherty?
I'm just saying that I think that people should know that coming into it. I don't argue with it at all. I just think that them knowing why and how it's going to change...
Yeah, I wasn't arguing with it. I just want to make sure we've done everything before we make that decision, and that's all.
Okay. Does she know other questions? We have, oh, sorry, Mr. Bobbin.
I know we have more business to conduct, so I won't belabor this. But I think there are a couple of points that were prompted for me in response to what I heard from the public comment. First, I want to thank everybody who came. Many of them have left, but I want to thank everybody who came and spoke at public comment. I found the comments helpful. Two points, one quick one. Can we go back a couple of slides? I don't know who has the clicker on this. Go back to the graph that looks like this, the bar graph.
Homework one?
Yeah.
Which one? This one?
Yeah, the statistics are the same for both. Let's stay with this one. The number I want to go after is the same on both. So let's be clear about what we are and are not able to do here, right? So we've heard evidence from a medical doctor and a lot of academic literature that says that more sleep is good. I'm all for more sleep, in any context, especially for teenagers. And I think that's helpful and a sound basis for making policy. What we can't know, and will never know, and will never be able to control, is whether that additional hour will actually provide Reading students with more sleep. What we have heard is evidence that in communities that have added an extra delayed start by an hour, that such outcomes are reported. So we're making this leap of faith that that would apply to Reading. We'll never really know. We've also heard from public comment that says, and this data tells, I think, a similar story, that students have a lot going on. And the fear, and not only did we hear this tonight, but we also heard it in the emails that we received from a number of stakeholders. There were, there's a deep and abiding concern in all of these comments, to my mind, that this could just shift the end of the day an hour later. And for this to work, if our goal is to create circumstances where we maximize the probability that our students are getting more sleep as a result of delaying the start of school, I think we need to address what happens at the end of the day. And when I look at these numbers, what you're talking about, and this is not a perfect analysis, but even if hypothetically, school by an hour, and we add an hour to those sleep numbers, hours into eight hours, right? And that's the best you could hope for, right? Considering we can't change the 24-hour day. So if we go from 24% to 58%, if I did my math right, to add the blue bars together, right? You're still at below 60%, which is lower than the elementary school. That's 66%, right? So we're still not achieving what I think you were trying to point out with that last bar over there, which is 66%. Two out of three kids in elementary school are getting, or middle school, I'm sorry, in middle school, pre-teens are getting the sleep that they should, at least reporting getting the sleep they should. We're still not there yet. And so to contend with the left side of this graph, which is the five hours or less, or the six hours or less, or the student with the eight hours of homework, whatever it is, I would, as part of this, if I were to vote for this, I would need some assurance that we're going to cap, as a matter of policy in this district, extracurriculars ending at 9 o'clock or earlier. But if the current end times for extracurriculars are 9 o'clock, I would support this with the understanding that we're not going to extend extracurriculars. My priority on this committee is curricula. It is academics first. You can choose to do extracurriculars, that's fantastic, I support that. But our priority is to educate students, and I know there's a lot of education that occurs in extracurriculars, I'm not minimizing that. But I just, even if that has a ripple, an effect on extracurriculars, I still feel strongly that if 9 o'clock is the right time, if that's when extracurriculars end now, that's when they end if we extend this. So that's the first point. Second point, completely changing gears to public safety. I would also, to support this, need some assurance that a member of the police department is involved in the traffic planning, not just consulted. But I want to see physical evidence, meaning an email, a memo, or firsthand, like, reporting, like, have a police officer come and talk about, when we roll this out, the police department is doing these additional things, or these things that we're currently doing, we're going to keep doing. This is how we're going to guarantee public safety will not be adversely affected. There's too much at stake here. Along with Ms. Williams, I go to Birch Meadow as well. It's where two of our kids go. I see the traffic crunch that we have there. And it scares me when I look at the traffic patterns, if we're putting all those high school cars and the teen drivers, and the late-to-work drivers, and the late-to-school drivers, and all those drivers together on the road with kids who are kids. There's a significant risk here, and I don't want to, I don't want to miss that and have unfortunate outcomes.
Mrs. Kelly, could you just go to slide 31 again for a minute? I just want to highlight, so I think I agree with a lot of things that Mr. Bobbin just said, but I would like to say that I don't know that 9 o'clock is the right, you know, time to say that everything should end. And certainly, you know, competitions and games and matches are a little bit more...
You wouldn't be able to, yeah.
Difficult to control.
Practice as you can, but in earnest.
Practices and, oh, there we go. Yeah, so I just want to highlight that this is, I think what we're asking for is, you know, you've highlighted a lot of these things, we're talking about it, I think Mr. Bobbin's asking for, let's make sure that, you know, we hear from the police department, from the police chief, to my mind, that they are really on board with this, and they're going to lead this, and they're going to bust down some barriers that haven't been busted in a number of years. So I definitely feel strongly about that. But I also want to see, I think that we need to, you know, let the team, and Principal Boynton talked about, you know, looking at the schedule, looking at homework, and working with our AD, Tom Zaya. And Lena Williams in guidance is certainly a key part of all of these things, as she's probably the person on the front lines that understands the stresses that our students are under, whether those are coming from the curricular, the academic, because I sit in the same place, or whether, you know, that combination of curricular, homework, parental expectation, their own desire to participate in sports and drama. And so I think, you know, there's a number of things that we need to commit to, to make sure that they, I think, it was sort of the ecosystem that is, I think you said, the science around sleep, that that's real. But we need to arrange these other aspects of the ecosystem so that they support this, and they take that all in. So, and also, I just want to echo, thank you to people who were here, and I tried to count it up, but I think we got about 15 emails from people, and it's evident people took a lot of time to write their thoughts and their comments to us and speak their minds, so want to thank them.
We have one more agenda item that I would like to endeavor to start, because we have a packed agenda on the 20th as well. Dr. Doherty, are you ready?
Sure.
We can start. We have the superintendent's goals this evening.
So in your packet, in your packet, there are two sets of goals. And just set the context, this is an annual part of the evaluation process. It's actually the beginning steps of the superintendent's evaluation process, where the school committee reviews the goals that have been set forth by the superintendent for the upcoming year. There are actually two pieces that the school committee uses as part of the evaluation process when referencing goals. The first one is the district improvement plan, which we, we are now in our third year of the district improvement plan. That you have already voted on. So those are there in your packet this evening for informational purposes, and they've been updated to reflect where we are. The other piece, which is the piece you're going to vote on this evening, is the, what is called an educator plan. The educator plan, every licensed educator in Massachusetts that is in a public school has to have an educator plan, including the superintendent. The school committee's role in this is that they approve the superintendent's educator plan, just like a superintendent approves the educator plans for all of the people that he or she supervises. The principal approves the educator plans for all of the teachers that they supervise. So this is all, this is all part of the same evaluation process that is in the regulations with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. So that's the context of what an educator plan is. At the end of the year, when you do my summative evaluation, and all of you have done it before, you give a rating for each of the goals, both in the district improvement plan and in the educator plan, as to progress. The educator plan, although it is for this year, is a multi-year plan, the way it has been set up, because goals are never, ever, ever done in one year. And when you look at these goals, you can see why, that these are multi-year goals. These are things that currently are being worked on in this district. One of them is actually connected to the district improvement plan, so it's like the arm to the district improvement plan and goes all over those pieces. But other ones refer to things that you heard about earlier this evening, which was the capital plan, and that there are several items in the capital plan that impact schools, and those are things that are currently happening in our school district, not just for this year, but over the next few years, and that that would be part of the superintendent's educator plan. So what I want to do is I just highlight each of the five goals that are here, not go over them in great detail, because I'm hoping that you've read them already, but just to explain the why. So the first couple of pages...
Did you just make, like, reference the page numbers?
Sure. So I'm on my educator plan right now, I'm not on the district improvement plan. So the first couple of pages, pages one and two, really just talk about the overview of the cycle, which is what I just did, and the district improvement plan for focus areas, which you, I'm sorry, for action plans, which you've seen in the past. The first goal, which is a student learning goal, which is aligned to all five action plans of the district improvement plan, basically encompasses, these are the things that not only myself, but other members of the central office team and principals are going to be working on in relation to the district improvement plan. So you can see there that, you see the action steps, the supports and resources from the school district, the timeline or frequency, and then the status. Originally, it was the status as of 10:30, because these technically should be done by November 1st. But they, we had to move this process to tonight. The second goal, which is a professional practice goal, it's aligned with focus area E, is an extension of last year's, one of my goals last year, is really focused on a communication goal, which is an area that, in my evaluation last year, was brought up with the committee, is an area that I should continue to strengthen and work on. So that's what goal two is focused on. You'll also notice that some of these steps have already been done, and that's because I've been working on these since July, after my last summative. Technically, my next cycle started July 1. The third goal is focused with, is connected with focus area D in the district improvement plan, which is social-emotional learning. And this really is the physical and psychological security of our schools. So, as you know, we've been working diligently on our school emergency operations plans. Those were all revised this summer. This also includes attending workshops and drills and participating in panel discussions, and also working with facilities, GAIL, and the town, with safety audits, and also the safety and security capital piece of the capital plan. So that is goal three. Goal four is really working and developing a multi-year capital plan to upgrade and improve school facilities. So many of the things that Mr. Huggins and Mrs. Dowd talked about are in this goal. So as you can see, that's why it is a multi-year goal. So this includes the elementary planning and enrollment study. It also talks about the safety and security study, and it talks about the athletic fields that are under the care and custody of, the athletic fields and facilities are under the care and custody of the school committee. And then the fifth goal really is a building capacity goal of our staff, and that's aligned with the four of the five focus areas. So this, again, are things that we've already begun doing, which was reorganizing central office roles, getting all of central office staff into one central location, which has not been the case in several years, restructuring some of the different roles of the chief financial officer, the assistant superintendent, director of student services, and activities planned to build the capacity of each of the sectors that have been identified. So you have the operations sector, the teaching and learning sector, the student services sector. And then connected to that is also the building of the capacity of our building principals and remainder of the district leadership team. So those are the five goals, which, as you can see, are connected to our district improvement plan as well.
Mr. Robinson? Make sure to refer to the page, so we can...
Yes, so on, just like, kind of, on page six on the... Yes, so on, just curious, just like a kind of a, on page six, on the, so, of all of those things, John, what do you think is working? I'm curious how the office hours are going.
The office hours seem to be seasonal, so right now, it's kind of slow. I do get a combination of teachers and parents, but the attendance is, you know, visitation is sporadic. During budget season, it does tend to pick up, and we do get much, I get much more, we get much more traffic, so that, you know, it's seasonal. I think it depends on the topics at hand and...
So, Mr. Robinson? No, I just was, so, just looking at that, on the walkthroughs, is that, I know for some educators, that can be the most difficult thing, because, to make sure that you do, but I started just wondering, I think that you execute on that pretty well.
So one of the things, so, and we've had actually a lot of discussion as a district leadership team recently about, how can we make our time together more effective and efficient? And we've made some changes, even at this point in the year, and we're going to be making some more changes, so one of the things that I, I used to meet with every administrator every week, and part of that, so I would go to the buildings and would be meeting with them, and the intent of that was so that, you know, if they had concerns or problems, that, you know, those would be the opportunities to have those discussions, unless obviously it was an emergency, and then, you know, we're all available. What we've decided to do is, for the new principals, that will be a weekly meeting. For veteran principals, unless they choose, it will be a bi-weekly meeting. The first half hour or less will be to address any, any agenda items that we, either one of us have, and in the second half hour is to go in, to do classroom visitations. So the goal is that at least every two weeks to be in classrooms in every building. Sometimes it'll be weekly, depending on the building.
Yeah, I did have another. So on that goal, to page six, the goal number, action number seven, I mean, we're already doing that, isn't it, the budget parents, is that what that is?
Budget liaisons, yeah.
So how, why does that become a new, I mean, that's something we...
It's not a goal, it's a step. It's one of the steps that match the goal of communication.
Okay.
All of these steps aren't new things, I mean, Nate, some of them are things that we've been doing in the past.
Dr. Doxer?
A couple of things. One is, we were...
Can you reference the page?
Just to comment on page six about what Mr. Robinson was just discussing at the conference, that was like an, oh, wow, you do that? You have budget liaisons, and people were scribbling down the idea, planning to go back to their own districts to do that, so I think it's really a tribute to our administration that they do it now, and that people are involved, you're just, you're commenting.
We've been doing one of for 15 years.
Right, and we have, and it's an assumption that everybody does it, but they don't, and it's been really helpful here. Not many communities could say they had passed their overrides last year either, so it's just a point of pride that we're doing that, and thank you. On point four, attend at least one school council, et cetera, we have a group of Medco parents who are really trying to get very active and get empowered and learning and wanting to find ways, so I'd love to add Medco to that list of meetings to go to at some point, to give them a chance.
So just, just as mentioned, Kate Boyton and Jason Cross and I have talked about that, and we would love to start the planning process of hosting a meeting in Boston rather than here. We haven't done it in a long time, but we're definitely in the process of that. As you know, the high school PTO doesn't meet often, so it might be an additional meeting, but we would love to do that, and we do have a very involved Redding resident contingent that I think would be excited about that possibility. So we're, that's definitely, it came up at the Medco conference that I went with Jason a couple of weeks ago, we had a retreat, and I know he's involved in the conference tomorrow, but it's definitely on our radar, and John will be part of that process, of course.
That's awesome. I remember years ago going to that meeting. So on page three also, I was looking at the measures of progress there, and under the social-emotional learning, I'd love to suggest that there are a lot of negatives, a decrease in discipline referrals, a decrease in student activity anxiety, they're not really negatives, they're positives, but it's written in a negative way. I'd love to add to that other increases that are happening. So there are an increase in student reports of hateful acts, that people are getting involved as upstanders to intervene and making sure that those are also considered. An increase in students feeling empowered and exhibiting upstandard behavior, that's sort of in the same category. Something really countable is an increase in student involvement in peer leadership programs, presentations, outreach, whether it's with RACASA or MVP or AWAD, student council, community service, but those are countable things also, that if there are more kids getting involved in those kinds of activities, that's through the message of social-emotional learning and would help them. And then also, an increase in staff engagement with empowering and supporting youth, I know that's already happening, because we have more AWAD group, a world of difference groups, we have more peer leader groups, we have the MVP and, MVP, something violence prevention, I'm trying not to...
It's the game changer program.
The game changer program. So we do have staff that have stepped up for those, and that's a sign that people are getting involved in positive ways. And also, I put down an increase in cross-discipline curriculum materials that encourage problem-solving, history, current events, community conversations, and a couple of examples would be, the courageous conversations would be, the conversations about swastikas and what they mean in history classes. Those are all evidence of what you and our administration have been changing in our schools in the positive way, according to the mission and your, and your goals.
So, I totally agree with everything you're saying, I don't know if it belongs here, because as you know, I provide for you every single year a significant amount of evidence. That's where that would fit in.
Right, that's...
We already have, I think, too many measurable things here. I think to add more, that, that would create, I think, a bigger capacity problem. That's where evidence comes in, which is also a part of the, of the summative evaluation process.
Okay, so I guess then my suggestion would be, because sometimes I think we get caught up in just what you provide, and these should be amongst those things that you provide for us to look at.
The evidence is, right, the evidence has always been very exhaustive, though, so I think it's good to say, these are some things that you'd want to see in that evidence.
Yes, that's what I'm saying.
But the evidence has always been quite exhaustive in terms of what you provide to, to show accomplishment and progress against the goals.
Absolutely. I just think, I don't want these things to be minimized. I think these are important things, important evidence towards the achievement of these goals, so I don't want them to go unnoticed. And there are many ways to achieve the goals, and these are amongst them, and they take a lot of time, so there might be some of the other things that, that aren't happening exactly as written, but then there are these, so, you know, there's all a balance there.
Yeah.
Well, I've watched these documents mature in my time on this committee, Dr. Doherty, and one of the things that I note here favorably is, is this, these tables that you've added, page four is the first example of one, and we can start there. All goals in our district, and I know you apply this, Dr. Doherty, to all of your team, need to be specific, measurable, achievable, relevant, and time-bound, right? And so adding this detail in your action column and the status and the frequency really addresses, in my mind, the specific and measurable and achievable time-bound components, and I really like that, and you've done that throughout, that's been a recent addition, I think, that you've added since I've been on this committee. So I appreciate that, and we should, we should keep that, I like that approach of having action items that we can both look at and say, this is what this superintendent is accountable for. And the other piece of accountability, so that's an action-oriented piece of accountability, I think this is very strong on that, the process of, if you take these, if you complete these actions, you've met the goals that this committee has set. The other way of assessing here is what I see on page three, and it's different, it's an assessment component, right? So going back to page three, that's some older, that's some language that originated in the superintendent's goals before that table on page four, it goes back farther. And we see here a list of what I would consider assessments from different sources. There's test scores that students take, there's survey responses, and there's internal statistics, I think those are the three sources, right? And one of the things that I've always struggled with at evaluation time is whether the superintendent and the committee, and these different, or different members of the committee are reading this assessment language in the same way when we get around to doing the assessment, right, of the superintendent. And so, let me just give you an example, this, the way, part A, closing the achievement gap, small a, a decrease in achievement gap on state and local assessments between, and that goes on, right, and it has a series of identified assessments, and this pattern continues throughout the page, right? So the simple question I have when I sit down to evaluate the superintendent in my role on this committee, is, does that mean that even if one of those assessments doesn't go in the direction we want, that that's a failure to comply with that entire goal? Because we heard in the way the state assesses us now, in Ms. Kelly's presentation, right, that they have, as I understood it, this, this new system where if you're, if certain metrics of your district go down even a little bit, that's not an improvement, and therefore it's considered not compliant with the goal that they would like to set for our performance as a district, right? Are we taking the same approach to the superintendent, and if so, we need to be clear about that. I don't think that's the right approach, but I could read this language reasonably to require that. And so I, and this gets to my next point, is there are some ambiguities baked into the way this document is written, and it's been a working document for a number of years, among a different, and the committee has changed with, you know, over that time period, right? Every year, two seats on this committee are up for election, sometimes people return, sometimes they don't. We have turnover on the committee. I am not going to vote against these goals, just to be clear, but I'm not happy with them because of that ambiguity, and because they've, they've kind of been a document that's been a work in progress, so we set out for these three years' goals, and then we change them as the committee has changed over time. But these are the goals that this committee voted on three years ago as three years' goals, and these are the goals that the superintendent has been working toward over the last three years. So for me, as a committee member, to say, no, I disagree with what prior committees have set out for the superintendent, and I think we should, maybe the announcement, move the goalposts on the superintendent in the third year of a three-year plan, that doesn't strike me as good governance, right? So I want to say right now that I'm categorically strongly opposed to multi-year goals for any superintendent from a committee, because the committee changes every year, potentially. The public has a chance to elect new people to the committee every year, committee can change for other reasons. So this is the last year, and therefore it's a one-year goal, right, because now we're in the third year of a three-year set of goals. So what I finally came down to when I thought about how to approach this part of tonight, I finally came down to, I said, well, Nick, this is the third year of a three-year plan, there's, you know, we've been working towards this, let's not try to change something that we've been working towards as a committee for three years, it's a one-year goal, which is what I, what I would like to see. So going forward, I would like to see a reset on, instead of just kind of, for next year, for 20, this is 1920, right? So for 2021, I would like to see this committee just, just do a fresh look at goal-setting for the superintendent with the goal to be clarity of interpretation and a one-year time-bound approach, where we can evaluate the superintendent. And it's okay if, as the superintendent said, a lot of these goals are big goals, they take multiple years to work towards. I am perfectly okay with voting the same goal year over year over year, because it's, it takes multiple years, right, but I want to have specific progress. The other thing I don't like about multi-year goals is, is there's the opportunity to say, well, we, we only got one-tenth of our goals in the three-year plan done this year, but we really can't assess a three-year goal plan, progress on a three-year plan until the end of the third year. And so there's a potential to say, as long as there's activity toward the goal, particularly on the assessment side, even if, even if the assessment metrics we've set out aren't being met, let's wait till next year, let's wait till next year, and you put yourself in a position in that third year where you say, oh, man, we're way off, we didn't meet the goal, and we should have acted two years ago, but we didn't. I also want to avoid that, I'm not saying that's where we are, I'm just saying I don't want to even have the potential for that, that kind of situation. So I'd like to see one-year goals, and I like the action plans, and I think that we can hold, you know, the superintendent accountable to this.
I think that's a discussion we have in June, though, that has nothing to do with, right?
Well, right now, right now, it's a discussion we could have tonight about changing these goals, and we have to vote on them, right? But I, what I'm saying is, when these goals are finished, when we're done with these goals, and we're setting goals for the following year, should be one-year goals.
So, as I mentioned at the beginning, there are two things here. There's the district improvement, which actually by statute has to be multi-year.
Yes, no, I know that.
Well, that's what you're, but that's what you're referring to.
No, the, I'm sorry, the superintendent's goals are, there's different ones, there's a student learning goal, and then there are practice, professional practice goals, right?
There's five goals.
And then you have four professional practice goals for a total of five, correct?
Yeah, there's five, yeah, there's five goals, right. But what you're referring to here is part of the district improvement plan, which by statute has to be multi-year.
And that's, that's fine, but the goal number one above it, right, so the interpretation of that for evaluating one individual is what we're talking about tonight. I agree, I agree, this is, district improvement plan is a separate conversation, it's multi-year by statute, and there's a rubric that we follow for that that is not in discussion tonight. Goal number one, however, is superintendent's...
No, there's no, there's no rubric that you follow for the district improvement. I get, I get evaluated on everything.
Correct.
Not just my goals, I get also evaluated on district improvement plan.
Correct.
That's correct.
But, but you get evaluated every year?
Correct, but the district improvement plan has to be multi-year.
I know, but we're not evaluating the district improvement plan, we're evaluating the superintendent, and that's done every year.
No, but you evaluate me, you give me a rating on the district improvement plan goals each year.
On the achievement...
On your performance.
On the goals.
Correct, yeah, that's, that's part of my summative evaluation.
I completely agree, and what I'm saying is, is the goals for the superintendent need to be one-year at a time goals. They, in the case of the goals relating to the district improvement plan, as I said, they would need to be repeated, you would assess progress toward that district improvement plan one year at a time.
So if I could continue the context that I was given earlier, the whole basis of the educator evaluation system in Massachusetts is that you do have multi-year goals as an individual educator, because you want to show that you have a direction, a vision of where you want to go. Almost every educator in our district has multi-year goals. Those goals are also fluid, they can change, based on situations, based on circumstances, based on available funding, those, all of those things do change, based on data that's available. You know, a lot of our principals this year are focusing more on math, because the data is showing that math, you know, we need to do more work on in individual schools. So that, that is fluid, but it is also meant to be a multi-year goal. Your school improvement plans, which our, our principals are evaluated on, are multi-year, again, by statute, they're not one-year plans, and it's again to show a direction, a vision of where you want to go as a school or a district. The, the individual educator goals are also meant to be multi-year, because that way you are continuing to build upon things that you are striving to avoid, towards, which are connected to your district improvement plan. It's all supposed to be interconnected.
I think that, at the end of the year, when you're evaluating performance, the issue is, what has the progress been, what's the evidence, and what's the progress against that goal, right? And is the, you know, the achievement level that was targeted for that year on that multi-year goal, is that, is that enough? And I think that's, that's the difficulty of, with the multi-year goal, and I think that's why, you know, you provide the evidence and the context, and, you know, what Dr. Dox was saying earlier, sometimes there may be some things that initially you put... that initially you put in the plan, specific actions, that didn't occur, but there may have been other things that became more important throughout the year, and those were accomplished. Overall, we have to rate, was the, given all of that, right, was the progress against that goal what was expected, or, you know, what our assessment of that progress is? But I think, Nick, if I, this on page three, I thought initially that one of the things you were trying to get at was, like, if you just take closing the achievement gap, right? There's three things there. So the question is, when the evidence is presented on the, where the progress this year on those three things, and where we end up, one thing is, you may, there's no, there's no like percentage. And I'm not, and I'm not suggesting that we should do this, because we do this at work, and I don't think it is actually that helpful. But all I'm saying is, these three items, I could be weighing them slightly differently in terms of the weight that I put in those three than any other member. We all could be, because we don't, we, that calibration between us as we do that. So I, you know, I don't know if, as we get to, you know, when we're doing the performance assessment in June, maybe this is something we just talk about as we get close to that time, to say, how are we going to make sure we're a little bit more calibrated on that? And that we understand that. But that is an area, and I think Nick was then saying, you know, just even, how do you rate, making your judgment on each item in terms of, you know, what is that progress level? So I think that it's a calibration issue amongst the raters, and it might be something that we could do a little, do a little better at preparing the committee for in the June timeframe, just in terms of how you balancing all those inputs. So, I don't know. Do you have a motion? Yeah. Dr. Doxer, can you read the motion?
Sure.
Let's get that on the table.
Move to approve the superintendent's goals as presented.
Second.
Any other questions? Mr. Bobbitt?
Yeah, so I think it's important that the committee be clear. In my mind, what we're voting on is not just the high-level goal, goal number one through five. And to Dr. Darty's point, I get that there, this whole process is heavily regulated. It's not like we can just do whatever we want here. So we're working within, as Dr. Darty pointed out, a significant amount of state oversight, I'll call it. Not on Redding, per se, but on all towns, right? So I'm looking at this as not just the high-level, I'll call them high-level goals, those first paragraphs that you see, starting on page three and page six, et cetera, that say goal number one, two. I'm also looking at the helpful tables on page four and six and the like.
Right.
I'm voting those two.
Yes, yes.
Right? And that, I'm saying the superintendent's accountable. And that's, even though it's not labeled goal, it's, well, planned activities, right? But I view that as part of the goal, even though it doesn't say goal on top of the page.
Yes.
Okay. So what I'm voting, I'm voting on, these are for me sufficiently smart, right, specific and measurable, et cetera.
Yep.
No, that's the goal, it's referring back to the goal, but I mean, I just want to make sure that we're aligned on that understanding. But look, I'm voting on the whole package here, meaning that goal number one is page four. And we can amend these as a committee if the superintendent wants to come to us and say, circumstances, you know, have changed and so forth. I'm receptive to that conversation, and to the extent it furthers the ultimate goal of student learning. I don't, I don't want to do things that are not optimized for that end, right? But these are the actions, not just a suggested list of activities. These are part of the goals, and that's important to me to vote for this.
Yes.
Okay. The, sorry, the other thing that I want to say about just interpreting how, I want to make sure we understand how this is understood. The communication goal, to me, I guess it's goal five, is it two? Is that where it ended up?
Yes.
I was looking on that.
Six.
Yeah, so, so there are three groups there, the staff, parents, and community. And I would be looking in these, not just at the actions, but as the goal of ultimately improving, or, you know, having the ability to get some feedback from each of those groups. So staff, including educators and administrators, parents, and community. So it's not just information going out to those groups as I read this goal and this action plan. It's some kind of evidence that those outward-bound communications are received and viewed as helpful in accomplishing the goal, right? Not just.
Right, you're asking.
I disseminated information in an organized way. That's part of it. But that, hey, that information was structured and delivered in a timely way that was helpful and allowed us to do whatever the intended purpose was. So I want to see that feedback from all three groups, is, that's what I think is part of this.
Mr. Robinson?
I just have, you said, I just had a question for Dr. Darty.
No, please go ahead.
So, back to the communication goal again on number, and I know these are activities that, on number eight, the survey.
So that was the survey we did last June. Our plan again is to do it in 2020.
So what, okay, so then, that would actually, that doesn't even really need to be there, though, right? If it's, that will be in our next, when.
It's a multi-year goal, so that, I put it in there to show that.
So there's no real, there's no, there'd be no.
It doesn't impact, it's not going to impact anything we talk about when we do your evaluation.
No, it's, but it, the pride survey, we're doing every two years, because of the cost associated with it. We're doing it on the off years of the YRBS.
To that, this is my, yeah. To that, to that point, though, you have accomplished it once.
We did it in June, and I presented it already this year, yes.
Right, so I'm saying that in terms of your, you know, it's planned, it's already, it's also completed and planned for the continuation.
Yes, the purpose of the one we just did was, it was a baseline. It was a baseline, yes.
And we didn't have the pride survey results this time around, when we just did the.
Right, the last review.
The last review.
Because, right, David's done in June.
I mean, this committee is already.
Later than when we, yeah.
The committee already has data that will help them evaluate at the end of next year. You have MCAS data already, you have accountability data already, you have pride survey data.
I think it's just, it might be helpful to say that this is the three-year, that it was completed in June of 2018, right? It's planned for May of 2020, but it was completed June of 2018. Is that true, on the pride survey?
Yeah.
Yes, but don't forget, the high school wasn't done until September of this year.
Oh, okay. All right, so that was September of this year. So it just might be helpful to, I mean, that would be in the, in the evidence, but I can see what, right, it's, it still belongs here, but it's already been completed this year.
Well, I thought that was there because it was the column to the left, that it would be in the budget for FY '20, and the FY '20 budget is part of what the superintendent will put together for us this upcoming year. That's why I thought it was there, not because the actual.
Oh, the cost, right.
That's what I thought the goal was.
Oh, yes.
Okay. So, I, I mean, at the top of each page, it says during the 1819 school year. Is that the right year? We're in 1819 school year, yes.
Yes, so during this year.
During this year, all right.
So that was my question, though. Why are we putting stuff in there that's not going to happen during the 1819?
Because it needs FY, well.
Because of the funding?
The funding, maybe. Because in this year, this budget, which we built for FY '20, you need the resources for the 2020 survey.
But again, it's also to show that the goal doesn't have, it moves forward. There are, there are other pieces attached to the goal that go beyond this year. That was the whole purpose of it.
Right, when you present your evidence, the evidence is going to include the pride survey result, you know, that was executed this September, last June and this September. But this, in this school year, for this evidence on your performance review, it would include the pride from September. Yeah, so.
So the one thing that I will be very sensitive to under these goals when I evaluate on them is, I would be very sensitive to situations where items are in these plans that we, that we approve, and they're not acted upon at all. To me, that strikes me as a failure. Like, if it's in here, it means there'll be some action this year on this. It doesn't have to be to complete it, but if it's, if it's listed here, it's because there's something to do this year toward that action item.
Right.
Or it shouldn't be here.
Okay, so, and this is one of the things that we, you could then say, if there's something that shifts, that during the year, something shifts, and this thing is not going to get done, are we, then, we could, Dr. Darty could come and say, I need to revise this goal, and this goal is going to be, and we do this at work, like, this is going to be canceled and moved out to a future year. This is the other thing that's going to be in. I mean, I, we've not done that. I don't know that that's.
Well, one goal that will be significantly impacted by decisions made beyond this group is the capital plan goal. So there may be some things that will not happen. It's all going to be dependent on actions that are taken by town meeting.
Right, I don't.
And other bodies, so.
Which words?
Right, generally what we've done in the past, is as the evidence is presented, you look at that and you say, okay, yeah, this is, you know, this, something didn't pass town meeting, the resources didn't come through, the goal can't continue to be executed. Now, the question is, is it, should we engage in a process whereby, let's say that happened, that subsequent to that town meeting, we, you can bring, just, it doesn't have to be the whole thing, but look, on this goal, I'm changing this, and I want your approval. And maybe, you know, if we need to look at that? I mean, I'm just trying to understand what you're putting out there. I know at work, we tend not to do the adjustment during the year. We tend to do it at the end of the year and say, right, yeah, we know, this goal got moved out because those resources didn't get approved, you did this other stuff, okay? You know, that worked on the goal in a different way, but.
I just, this is a public trust, this is public money. And so I think it's important that we have a very transparent process, and as part of that, that it's clear to everybody what this district is prioritizing and doing through the leadership of the superintendent. And the superintendent, in fairness to his role, that he has clarity around what we're asking of him. So I don't, I just want to, I'm eager to avoid situations where we get to the end of the year and we say, wow, I know that was in, I know that was in the goal, but it's a multi-year goal, and I, we just didn't get to it this year. If it's in, if it's in this plan that we vote on.
Then you're going to expect something.
It's in the plan. And if you change it, the public can decide what they think about that.
Well, if he needs to change it, we.
We can do it, but the public will decide what they think about that.
Mr. Robinson?
So, John, I just want to make sure I understand the capital. So the only thing that really hasn't gone past town meeting is the Turf Two situation, correct?
No, you have several, you have several steps in here that are.
But we've already, we've already gotten approval for the design study, right? That's one of them. That would require town meeting approval. The security, I thought that was our, that already went through town meeting, correct?
The initial design.
The design.
Phase did, yes.
I guess, I think you've done more than you, I think more has been done than you're indicating here, where it says planned, I think, some of them.
What page are you on?
Page 10 and 11.
Oh, 11.
Right?
Well, some, some of them have complete steps already.
Yeah, some, on the first page, the first side.
The backside, there's a lot of planned.
Page 10 has got quite a few complete, but then page 11's got. I think for, Chuck, for page 11, that was sort of next phases, so it was once we get the design, it's moving it forward to get the approval of the actual, if we, if we come to school committee and school committee says, we agree we're going to move forward with Turf Two, or we do not agree with Turf Two, it's sort of the next phase, once we come forth with our proposal of what we want to move forward with, that's the next hurdle from a funding standpoint. And that's the pieces that we're trying to be distinguished, if that helps, with what's on page 11 was kind of, we'll do the design, we'll propose it, then it's almost out of our hands a little bit as to whether or not it moves further down the process.
Part of, to piggyback on that, part of this is to tell the story of where this is going. That's part of the reason why goals are developed, is you want to show where is this going? Where's, where is the end of it? And so that's why you see multi-year steps here, not just the end of this year.
Right, I think, though, that the Turf Two wasn't even on, this time last year, it wasn't even on anybody's radar screen.
Correct, correct.
It wouldn't have been on this document.
Correct.
So.
Yeah. Mr. Bobbitt?
So a quick question about the language on security. I like these areas, I like this goal three, page eight, I like that. I just wanted to suggest some alternative language to see if what I'm thinking is what is intended. So it says to improve, dot, 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 the security of our schools, right? Are we really trying to just identify and implement best practices for school security? Is that what we're doing? As opposed to improving? So if we're state-of-the-art in some areas, there's no need to improve?
I don't, I don't ever want to say we're state-of-the-art in school security because of just the changing nature of what happens.
Fair, fair, but are we trying to identify and implement best practices? Is that, is that what we're doing?
That, the way the process would work, that would be part of it, and then it becomes what fits within, I think to say you, best practices can come with a cost that may or may not be achievable. I think it'll be a multi, a similar, it'll be a multi-phased approach, working with many options, many alternatives, and ultimately what the funding will support. So I think, trying to put a definitive word as best practice or state-of-the-art might be difficult, because best practice may or may not be achievable across all areas, if that makes.
That makes a lot of sense.
Are you saying, you're just looking to say to, like, improve and move toward best practices?
I mean, do we need improvement? I, I mean, we've heard presentations, but obviously we.
I think we can always improve and.
So we're not pointing to a deficiency, we're pointing to, we're going to invest effort to remain at a safe level for our community.
Absolutely.
Do we run that, like, I'm sorry, just.
Yeah, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. So that, especially with that one, I mean, if we start wordsmithing that, that's something that I'd be running by legal counsel, because anything ever happened, God forbid, this is all discoverable stuff. So, you know, we start saying state-of-the-art stuff, and, you know, I just, just, I don't, do, do they look at these things? Does legal, legal look at this?
My goals, no, no.
All right, are we ready for vote? We have a motion on the table, it was seconded.
Sorry, one last thing. I promise this is the last one. The whole area, it's in the plan, but it's not called out as a separate goal, and that's just the area of instructional best practices, I'll call it. And I just want to, is that what's meant by, is that part of goal five, specifically for, action item four, the assistant superintendent's role, curriculum coordinators, et cetera?
It's actually goal one.
Instructional leadership, best practices, making sure that all students are progressing toward whatever standard they should be working toward.
Improvement of instruction is goal one, because that's the district improvement plan. That's where, that's where we've been focusing our time and energy the last three years, is how do we improve, how do we increase the toolkit that every teacher has in this district?
So the improvements we've seen, and let's just take one example, and we heard a presentation about using Fanta's panel, reading benchmarking in grade school. There's great presentation, I think we made, from what I've heard from the presentation, a lot of progress toward having far more, and I think progressing toward all students have, being appropriately tested, assessed, and supported. That progress from, say, even two years ago when I joined this committee to now, where does that fall?
It's in the district improvement plan.
That's number one?
Yeah.
Okay.
And it would, it's under, like, literacy A and those things.
Yeah, so that's, that's goal one.
The whole strategic reason why I put goal one there is it connects me back to the district improvement plan. That, that's the whole reason for that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great, all right. Call for a vote. Great. All right. Call for a vote. All those in favor, four zero. I think we are done. So I need a motion to adjourn.
I motion to adjourn.
Second, are you guys?
Second.
Second, all those in favor, four zero. Excellent, thank you.
So we can avoid sleep deprivation.
Yeah.